We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, please. Would everyone rise for the invocation? And Pastor Eric Strom, would you come forward? He's with Living Waters Community Church.
Thank you. Would you bow your heads with me? Father, I just thank you for what a beautiful day it is. Father, I thank you for allowing us to live in such a beautiful part of the country. Father, I thank you for our leaders that are put before us. Father, I pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance and direction. Father, I pray for tonight's meeting, Father, that your presence would be here. Father, that you would guide and direct all the conversations, Father, and lead us to the best final outcome. Father, we give you all the praise and all the glory. And in Jesus' name, amen.
Captain Slakka, could you lead us into the pledge of allegiance to flag to our country, please?
Since there are so many people, let's say it like you mean it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome.
All right.
Awesome.
One thing we all agree about.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Simons.
Here.
Councilman Longcard.
Here. Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There's only 100 of you in here, or whatever. Good evening and welcome. Again, I'd like to remind you that it is gonna get warm in here. If you're here to speak, if you're here to watch the meeting, you can also do so from room 118, the corridor and outside, too, if it gets hot in here, okay? So I'm just letting you know. What I'm gonna do here, we're gonna go right straight to public comment on these agenda items. This will be your time to speak on the DRGR and anything else that's on the agenda, like that's gonna happen. Anyway, so what I'm gonna do, I will call a name, that will be the next speaker, and I will call two names, actually. The name after that will be the next speaker. You're welcome to please find your way up. So after the speaker speaks, I will say another name, and you just come right on up and be ready and be on deck, so to speak. Everyone get that, system?
They know that.
That way, we can go ahead and keep it rolling, and we don't have to wait for someone to come all the way up from outside. If you're outside or you're in there, you will still hear this, so you'll be able to know when you're able to speak. So we all, we're good? Ready to go?
They know about the cards.
Good, good. Everyone knows about the cards. If you haven't filled out a card, not gonna call your name, you won't be able to speak. Okay? So fill out a card if you want to, they're out there, and be sure they'll get it up here. All right, here we go. Our first speaker, Jennifer Hecker, please come forward.
Okay.
And then Don Konikowski, you will be the second speaker. I'm sorry, wait a minute. Our city manager has a look like, what in the heck are you doing?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
That's just the way he looks. Okay, come on up.
St. Louis lost the World Series.
He's been around me a lot. I'm sorry, go right ahead. Hello.
Good evening. Jennifer Hecker, on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, I'm the Director of Natural Resource Policy, and I work on state and federal water policy issues for the Conservancy and have for the past 10 years. As you all are well aware, the Benita Springs area has always had very serious water quality and flooding problems. The Imperial River is not meeting state water quality standards. We know the land in the DRGR is heavily impacted, but this area is also strategically important for the protection of water resources in this area and for the restoration of our water quality and for providing better flood protection to downstream residents. We have and will hear tonight again from water experts that the wrong type of development or development in the wrong location can and will exacerbate the water quality and flooding problems that Benita Springs is currently experiencing. And that is why it's so important that the Benita Springs City Council takes the current plan that you have before you and integrates it with all of the water studies that have already been completed through many years. There's been hydrologists, water quality experts who have done multiple studies on this area. Those need to be integrated, and we need to put watershed planning first and foremost, building a plan around protection and restoration of water resources for this area before allowing additional density or development in the DRGR area. It is only after we take those water resources and create a watershed plan that we can know what truly is sustainable for this region. And so we're asking you to please defer this, do not move forward with the current plan that does not do enough to address these issues. We have been proactive in reaching out to try to meet with the study authors multiple times, and in our opinion, the final plan does not go far enough. 10% improvement is not enough to meet the total maximum daily load pollutant limit for the Imperial. There is more needed with regards to stormwater. The South Florida Water Management District acknowledges that its own standards for discharging to impaired waters are not sufficient, which is why today it held a rural development workshop earlier today in Fort Myers to update those standards. So in the meantime, it's important for the city to look out for itself. Ultimately, you're on the hook, the taxpayers in this community are on the hook for paying to restore the Imperial River back to being safe for swimming and fishing. So it behooves you to make sure that any development out there reaches higher standards and does not contribute to increased pollutant loading to the Imperial River. Thank you very much, and we will have additional people speaking on our behalf as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Konikowski, please come forward. And the next speaker will be Mark Generalis.
Don Konikowski and Hickory Boulevard. I won't duplicate with several stakeholders we'll talk about tonight as far as the specifics of the DRGR, but I do want to comment because what ultimately occurs in the DRGR affects everyone in the city. The state statute indicates that it is the intent of the legislature that the public participate in the comprehensive planning process to the fullest extent possible. The statute for the process of plan amendment defines an affected person to include the affected local government, persons owning property, residing or owning and operating a business within the boundaries of the local government whose plan is subject to review. We don't want to be left out of the public participation process. We don't want a handful of council-appointed stakeholders privately preparing the amendment. We don't want to be kept out of the process until it is finished and ready to be transmitted to the state. I am a stakeholder. Most everyone in this room tonight is a stakeholder, and we want to participate in the comprehensive planning amendment process to the fullest extent possible, whether we are for or against the increase in density. We want to be able to sit at the table along with the chamber members, the businessmen, the developers, the property owners in the DRGR, and share our relevant and appropriate studies, data, analysis, and our vision and goals for our community. A stakeholder is anyone who can affect or is affected by a certain course of action. Therefore, as you can see, we are all stakeholders in this very important matter of considering amending the citizens' vision by increase in density in the DRGR. Anyone who resides within the city limits that is interested in participating should be allowed the right to be considered a stakeholder, and the council should not appoint a mere handful of stakeholders to amend the citizens' vision. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider my request.
Thank you very much. Mark Generalis, please come forward, and the next speaker will be Brian Filson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you all tonight?
Good.
I want to start out by doing something which is a little bit different, and I just want to take a minute and thank you all for your service this evening. I've sat in your shoes, I served as the county commissioner for eight years. I know the stress, the difficulty, and the hard decisions that you have to make, and I think sometimes all of us forget how much work you put in. So I will be one who will say that right up front. This decision this evening, I know, is a difficult one. I see the folks in the audience, and I think it's absolutely awesome and wonderful that we have as much participation in our process as we do. As you move forward with this decision, I think it is incumbent upon you, take a look at the studies that you have in hand, don't be afraid of growth, don't be afraid of making the hard decision, and plan properly. There will be enough naysayers in the audience and enough folks who want to move forward, but I think if you guys really, really sit back and look at it long and hard and plan properly, I think you'll have an opportunity to do what's right for the city. My biggest issue, and I lived through a comp plan zoning ordinance and everything else when I was in office, and we felt a lot of opposition to growth in and of itself, and I think you have to be careful not to fall prey to just being afraid of growth. Deal with the flooding issues, I think that's your biggest issue probably more than anything else. But outside of that, I think if you plan and move forward, you'll probably be in good shape. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brian Filson, and on deck will be Chris Davis, please.
Hello, thank you for your time. I just want to come from a multi-generational. My father lives with me from 78-years-old, and I recently got married three weeks ago. So I will say that we've been talking about the next generation. I have entered into maybe a difficult decision that you know between next generation, father and wife. So I would say that I do understand that it's tough times.
Your wife's not here tonight, is she?
No.
She might misconstrue that, but go ahead.
Absolutely.
[Laughter].
But I think it was said very well in regards of growth versus apprehension, and I would just say that there is something to be said for putting a plan in place. The best-laid plans don't move forward the same way over the next 10 years, and I think they can be amended. And I think there's something to be said for the amount of research that's been done, and let's give the respect to that research, put something in place, let's give respect to the money that's been spent, by the city's money already, and just see what can be done there and amend it as necessary. And I think that a split council is a good one because you will absolutely keep everyone in check and move forward in the right way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chris Davis, please, and then Dennis Church will be after that.
Taking a pass.
I beg your, oh, taking a pass, okay. Then, thank you very much. And Dennis Church, you come on up, and Donald Griffin will be next to speak.
Good evening, and thank you for getting me so early in the lineup. Dennis Church, for the record, Benita Springs has been planned since our cityhood with our own set of community standards, standards, land use regulations, comprehensive plan. The DRGR is a part of the city that we inherited a land use plan from Lee County, and it is time, through your leadership, to deal with that issue. There are perceptions about this area and what proper planning would bring to the area. You guys have studied these issues, I've talked to some of you individually, you can cut through some of those misperceptions. You know that much of Benita Springs looked like the DRGR at one point in time. Certainly, the land south of Benita Beach Road that used to be in the DRGR classification used to be ag fields that, without water management or pumps, would flood in the summer. You have empirical data to help you make the decision tonight. You know that Carl Baraco, who did the study, had leadership roles in many of the best-planned communities and public features in Benita Springs. You know that in East Benita, many other professionals have designed great communities, communities like Worthington, Palmyra, Village Walk, Quail West, and Hunter's Ridge are good examples. And were those properties once in the DRGR? Yes. Did they cause the flooding in Benita Springs? No. Did they improve degraded environmental systems? Yes. Did they facilitate water flow and implement vest management practices? Yes. Did they fund and build new roads? Yes. Did they enhance our community both culturally and aesthetically? So I ask you to take a look at those examples. All of those had comp plan designation issues, all of them took a vote and made the changes. I'm sure you'll make the proper decision.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Donald Griffin, and then after him will be Jason Perry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a fairly newcomer to Benita Springs, about seven years now and two years permanently. I really can't say that I have a lot to, you know, input to the meeting tonight, but I did want to just bring some of my own personal background. I'm a commercial real estate appraiser. I've appraised many, many subdivisions over the New England area over the last 23 years. What we basically see...
Could you lean into the mic for me? Raise the microphone up a little bit. Go ahead and just grab a hold of it and pick it right up there. There you go, talk right into it, they want to hear you.
Again, just from an appraisal point of view, what we generally see is planning is generally better than not planning, okay? And that's basically the simple message that I want to get across today, is that as a council, you're in the position of directing and managing a very large landmass, and left to its own evolution, bad things generally happen. The communities that I appraise in where values are enhanced and where it becomes a desirable place to live generally come with planning. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you ever use the Elwood tables?
I'm sorry.
I used it, it's what my dad wrote.
Jason Perry, please come forward. And after that will be Jenny Burmeister will be next. Go ahead, Jason.
Jason Perry. What will happen if we don't accept the plan and create a vision? We need to support a plan for this area in Benita Springs in order to avoid a continued piecemeal development, which potentially could cause environmental damage and impact the city for future generations. If we don't take this opportunity to assemble parcels of land, there will be no opportunity for restoration, water quality improvements, or beautification. Projects because there will be no rules for funding dedicated to this critical area in the city. The continued use of septic tanks. Septic tanks severely and adversely impact water quality. Future development with comprehensive sewer requirements is a must in this day and age if we are to protect our environmental responsibility. Development will happen without the benefit in need of generation funding for future challenges such as to improve roadways such as Benita Grande, Terry Street, and others that already exist from currently developed neighborhoods on the south side of Benita Beach Road east of I-75. This is the exact opportunity that we've been waiting for, and we need to increase jobs in the city of Benita Springs. Think about the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ben, can I make a point of information, please?
I want to go ahead and get through these speakers, and we'll have plenty of time to talk if we can.
It pertains to the address where they reside on the cards, that's why I'd like to have everybody identify themselves so we know who's speaking and if they live in Benita Springs.
That's fair.
All right. If you would care to, we can't require you to, but if you would care to identify where you live, you're welcome to do so, but we cannot require you to, okay? Our next speaker is Jenny Burmeister.
Hi, I'm Jenny Burmeister. I'm on the board of the Benita Chamber, and I know that a lot of money has already been spent on plans and to find out what is going to be done in the future, but one of the things that concerns me the most is that our environment is being harmed by unchecked runoff from agricultural activities. If we plan now, we can actually improve the water quality with the state, with the state-of-the-art infrastructure such as stormwater management systems, sewers, and requirements for more eco-friendly chemicals on agricultural lands. I mean, we all know what's been happening with the runoff from Lake Okeechobee and what's happened, you know, to the pristine environment here in the southwest Florida, and I think that, you know, you can all help the rest of the environment here. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Marcy Kubaka? Or Kubaka? Nope. Marcy? No?
Might be outside.
Oh, okay. Well, then it would be Marjorie Rubacki. I know I got that one right. Marjorie, would you like to come forward? And then after that will be Vince Mottarelli.
My name is Marjorie Rubacki. I...
My name is Marjorie Rubacki. I have...
Hey, everybody, I'll take care of that, okay?
What?
I said, "I'll take care of that." I'll get to it. Speak right into the microphone with you. Thank you.
That better?
Yes.
Yeah, a little louder, that'd be great.
That's good. I have lived in Benita Springs for over 20 years, and during that time, I have listened to many reports of many researchers who have studied the DRGR area to determine its viability for economic development. And during those years, just regular Benita residents like myself have worried that there would be harm to the environment if we proceeded with this kind of development and possibly negatively impact our potable water supply. The Baraco report reassures us on these points. The area contributes no water to one of our aquifers and an insignificant amount to the second one. As to the environment, the report points out that carefully planned development of the area will not only not hurt the environment, but will improve it through restoration and recreation projects in addition to road infrastructure, landscaping, and streetscaping projects. No one wants overdevelopment of the DRGR, but Benita Springs deserves more than the suburban, urban sprawl that this area is now as a result of piecemeal development. We have a wonderful opportunity here to improve the environment, provide state-of-the-art infrastructure, and increase jobs in the city of Benita Springs. So I urge you to support the Northeast Quadrant Land Use Plan as proposed by Baraco and Associates, and urge the staff to develop a new future land use category that would allow further public input and more detailed analysis of issues and potential solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vince Mottarelli, come forward, and behind him will be Wendy Fowler, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Vince Mottarelli. I serve as the Vice Chairman for Governmental Affairs at the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. I just want to encourage the council to capitalize on the groundwork that has been laid in front of this council. And having been a resident of Southwest Florida and having done business in Benita Springs for the last nine years, I often look for the opportunity to thank those who've done all the groundwork in preparation for what it is that has become the community that I'm so proud to work in and so proud to raise my children in. And in that sense, I encourage you to capitalize on the groundwork, the multiple workshops, over the last 13 years, the investment, the monetary investment in land use studies. And I encourage you to accept that Northeast Quadrant Land Use Study that was presented in September 2013 to this council. I also ask you to direct your staff to proceed with the development of a new future land use category that would allow, again, allowing further public input and more detailed analysis of issues and potential solutions. That is our request, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, would Wendy Fowler please come forward? And next up will be William Campos.
[inaudible]
Okay. And so is William Campos? Are you in the room? William? Okay, how about, oh, Christine Ross? I know you're standing there. All right, and then Donna Stone, you will be next, okay?
Good evening, city council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight. I'm Christine Ross, the President and CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. You know, I've spent a lot of time going through all of the studies, and I commend the work that goes into what you're doing here today. A lot of time and energy and thoughtful communication with all of the residents in the community, and I'm really impressed to see everyone here tonight because they care, and that's really important. What I'd like to suggest that you do is to embrace the Baraco study. Move forward with a comprehensive land use amendment in the comp plan, adding a new category, and then create a task force with some residents, some stakeholders, some business people. You have a unique opportunity. We have just been through the greatest downturn in the economy in the history of the United States. We have been seeking to build jobs, to have diversification of our economic base. We aren't here to tell you what should be out there, whether it's 10 houses, 10,000 houses, a couple of corporate headquarters, more recreational amenities, sidewalks connecting families to be able to get out to the crew trust. I mean, there are amazing array of things that you could do in this environment if you just dream. It doesn't have to be just one thing, but the point that I want to make, we will not be able to have cleaner water out there, to have state-of-the-art sewer-ing, to have green infrastructure put in. We could become a landmark and a model for people across the United States to come and see what state-of-the-art planning is like. We could do whatever we want here and be as innovative as possible, and you all have the opportunity to create that plan. If you do nothing, if you do not plan, landowners have rights. They will start, piece by piece, developing, and you will lose your opportunity for sewer-ing and stormwater mitigation. That is a huge opportunity, we can't afford to do that. We're gonna have a big project just in downtown coming forward that's gonna cost a lot of money. We want to expand the roadways so that when there's an emergency, everyone can get moving to the center part of the state away from the edges. You all can ask for all of these things with your plan. You can write the ticket. This isn't gonna come again. This is your one opportunity. Please take it and plan for the future of this land, that's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Donna Stone, please come forward, and after that will be Mary Myma.
Good evening.
Myma.
Donna Stone, Worthington Country Club, on the Executive External Affairs Committee, and I am speaking also as a taxpaying citizen. I am asking the city council to please acknowledge the receipt of the Baraco report, but not to accept the scope of the implementation of its plan. This is a report slanted towards building, not towards conservation. The report does not identify water, portable, storage issues, flood control areas, or concerns. Show solutions... Why is this blinking yellow?
It's actually taking...
There you go. Show solutions to prevent contaminated runoff from the proposed 5,000 to 7,000 homes in the DRGR area to the rivers and streams and to the beach, or what the effect this will have on the dam. It does not document any of the solutions for cleanup to our streams and Imperial River or the water flow to the beach. Right now, we have water restrictions in our dry winter months and many fire scares. What is going to happen to our water use with the homes already built or under construction in the 041 Imperial Parkway and Benita Beach corridors? Then you want to add an additional 5,000 to 7,000 homes in the DRGR area to aggravate the problems and the shortage. The Baraco plan does not mention or inform us of a long-term plan of what the city's infrastructure needs will be or the tax impact from possible additional schools, fire station, and a road widening that will be needed, or long-term plans for the use of the impact fees to benefit special one-time projects that the city will need. We need a plan that takes into consideration our concerns that the Baraco report does not. I am asking you to implement a one-year moratorium on any consideration, any construction, excuse me, or subdivision in the DRGR area. I have found three recent examples of Florida land use moratoriums. Ironically, one was in 2007, and it was also in the DRGR Lee County area. And I'm gonna give these three to Audrey.
Thank you.
I am asking the city council to appoint a special committee with citizens' participation to look at and request a much-needed hydrology report, the impact fee distribution, the tax impact, and a long-term scope plan for our city's future construction, water, and river needs. We cannot continue to build and build and build in Benita Springs without dealing with the construction ramifications to our water needs, tax impact, river cleanup, and the future of our beautiful beach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would Mary Myma, please come forward, and Beverly Greenstein, you will be next.
Thank you. Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, Ben. I'm Mary Myma, and I'm here tonight as a volunteer with the American Cancer Society. I'm the event chair this year, and with me is Ann Musselman, who is our community representative with the American Cancer Society.
Thank you. We are here to encourage you to approve Agenda Item 7H, our request for a special event permit, the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life event, and cosponsorship by the city. We thank you for your continued support as it's the 14th year for the event.
And just in case anybody would like to come out, Tuesday, November 12th, Colony Bay Club in Pelican Landing, they are hosting the kickoff for Relay from 5:30 to 7 o'clock. We'd love to have everybody come out and see what Relay is all about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll have to go to the Colony in Pelican Landing.
Okay, Beverly Greenstein, and then after that, Adam Ginsburg.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Greenstein, and I live at Worthington Country Club. This auditorium is packed to overflowing with the citizens of Benita Springs concerned with the proposed rezoning of the DRGR and the... with the proposed rezoning of the DRGR and the.
Ma'am, just go ahead and speak into the microphone a little bit more. There you go. They want to be able to hear you.
Better?
Lean right into it. There you go. Thank you very much.
And the impact on the quality of life, the natural resources, and our property values. In reference to the moratorium that Lee County instituted, that was done on December 4th, 2007, and they provided for a moratorium on submittal and processing of zoning application on lands located within the DRGR in the southeast portion of Lee County, south of State Road 82 and east of I-75. Of course, that has expired. However, it addresses the same concerns we have at this time. It puts into detail all our questions and all the requests we have. And instead of taking a vote to rezone at this meeting, perhaps we could take a vote for a one-year moratorium. Within that year, workshops can be conducted by the experts in the fields of land use and water management, and make use of all the studies that we've already done. We all appreciate that property owners have a right to use their land. However, the DRGR is our safety net for water control. It is not simply another piece of real estate waiting to be developed. We cannot afford to make a mistake, and we need to be creative, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Adam Ginsberg, and that will be followed by Nicole Johnson with the Conservancy. Adam, are you there? Nope. Nicole? Come on up. After Nicole will be Jessie Perdomo.
Good evening. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of southwest Florida. I would first like to very much thank you for allowing Mr. Eric Livingston, the retired Administrator for Stormwater from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and our Stormwater Expert for the DRGR, to make a presentation tonight. We know it's a long meeting, but we believe that his information is going to be very helpful and important to you in making your decision. In the DRGR, getting the water right is really the linchpin for the Imperial River, for residents concerned about flooding, for water quality, water recharge, and flood control. The Conservancy is not opposed to looking at some options for development in the DRGR, but first, we have to get the water right. The city needs to have a plan that identifies the water resources' needs, the necessary restoration project and flood control projects, protection measures to protect water recharge, and standards for appropriate stormwater management that will help the city to meet the pollution reduction requirements in the Imperial River. You heard at your last meeting from Roger Kopp, who is a stormwater, I haven't been going that long, who is a hydrology expert. And the kind of flip side of that coin is the stormwater. So Mr. Livingston will be providing you information on that. You're at a decision point right now. We believe that the city should not pursue implementation of the recommendations of the Northeast Quadrant Plan for allowing for additional intensity and density of land use in the DRGR. I shared at the last meeting our Stormwater Expert, Mr. Livingston's conclusions, but I did want to, again, provide those to you because I think this really says it all. Mr. Livingston writes, "The Northeast Quadrant Plan will not achieve the desired objectives, especially related to protecting and restoring the downstream Imperial River." And, as written, "This plan will lead to increased stormwater pollutant loading being discharged downstream, and likely will enter the city's MS4 and become the city's and its taxpayers' responsibility for reducing the pollutant loads. Reason enough for you not to pursue this Northeast Quadrant Plan's recommendations." So if you don't move forward, then what do you do? The Conservancy believes that a watershed planning effort is needed. You have an item on your agenda to create a water task force. We think this is a good idea. What we really need is strategizing with the experts to determine what water projects are out there, and what needs to be done, and how to do it. Bottom line, we're asking that you not move forward with the recommendations in the Northeast Quadrant Plan. Doing the wrong thing would be much worse than doing nothing. But we believe that instead, we don't want you to do nothing. We want you to pursue getting the water right. Have water experts sit down, look at planning, have a water task force to create a vision. It's all about getting the water right. We don't believe that you're there yet, but we want to help you get there and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessie Perdomo. And then after that will be Ben Hershenson. Is that right? Ta-da! So proud of myself. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, and distinguished guests, this is about a vision and a direction for Benita. Development is something that needs to be planned and regulated. We need increased standards, simply because we deserve increased standards. Benita is not the stepbrother of Naples, Fort Myers, or anybody else. Benita is much more. I live right off Old 41 in the heart of Benita, and Benita, believe me, is a lot more to me. When I discuss a direction, I think that 750 new septic tanks is as positive a direction for Benita as another dollar store on Old 41. This is about strategic planning, planned growth, and about a Benita as a city taking the necessary steps to reach our potential. This is why I ask the Council to take a hard look at what kind of Benita they envision. Then vote for that vision, vote for growth, and vote for Benita. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, Ben, would you please come forward? And then after that will be Wesley Norris.
Good evening, Council members. Hey, Peter, how about those Red Sox?
How about those Red Sox, baby, huh?
Ben Hershenson, Fair winds, community. Perhaps I take a different tack than others who are going to be addressing the Council this evening regarding the DRGR area. As of this moment, according to the city, approximately 1,500 residential units are in the pipeline for Benita Springs, according to submitted development orders. 967 single residential units and 462 multi-dwelling. I realize not all are under construction as yet, but 1,500 is still a pretty good number. When do we reach the point that says enough for now? We all know what happened seven or eight years ago when there was so much construction going on in our area, then all of a sudden, the economy took a dive, and Lee County got stuck with four closed properties and projects left abandoned. I do not profess to have the knowledge to predict of the residential units now under construction in Benita Springs, how many will be sold, and how many will remain part of an inventory of unsold units. What obligation, if any, does a city have to maintain a reasonable standard for growth and development? A year's vote now that begins the process of more residential units, when we are beginning to witness homes now built and yet not sold, becomes a little bit unnerving. Does the increase in home values now underway stop and begin once again to go the other way? Let's get reasonable. Growth for the sake of growth without concern for how many is enough is kind of scary to me. And imagine, an individual like myself, I've been a pro-growth advocate for years, but I have to recognize once in a while, based on what we have witnessed the past few years, are we about to repeat another glut of unsold homes? Wait until we have a better handle on the units now in the pipeline before committing to more density in the DRGR area or anywhere else within our city. Yeah, a moratorium to me sounds pretty good at this time, and I support such a decision by the City Council. A year's vote to move forward with the Baraco report begins to move toward more residential units, no matter what anyone says to the contrary. Those who do not learn from the past are destined to repeat it. You all have a very tough decision to make. I wish you good luck in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Wesley Norris, would you please come forward? And Edward Patrick Fitzgerald, you're up next.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. I'm Wesley Norris. I live at 27233 Jolly Roger Lane in Benita Springs, and I'm a registered voter. Just a couple of things. I will agree with most everything that has been said here so far this evening. I think the Council at this time needs to move forward. I'm not, I don't know if the Baraco plan is the plan, but I believe it is a starting point and can be used as a starting point. I believe there's people in this room that are intelligent enough and have enough talent that can make that place out there what we would like the vision to be. And I'm not saying that you just take that plan and go do it. First of all, I don't think we're here, lest I misunderstand, that we're not here tonight to do any zoning. We're not here tonight to do any density out there and change any density out there. What we're here tonight is to get some input as to where we want to move forward. So I agree with pretty much what everything has been said so far, but I would also like for you to remember a couple of things, folks, if you would, please. I did not know that when development became a four-letter word, but it seems to be it is a four-letter word these days. If we're talking about redevelopment in downtown 41, that's okay, which I'm 100% behind. But if we're talking about development somewhere else, it's almost a four-letter word. So I would like for us to remember that. And another thing I would like for us to remember is very few of us, and I mean very few of us, are from the city of Benita Springs. Very few of us, and most of us in this room, are not from the state of Florida. We all came here. We all love this city. We think this city is a beautiful city, and it was done through planning, and I believe that's what we need to continue to do. I think we need to have a group with a vision to make that look like we want it to look. So most of us can remember when 41 was a single road. I've been here 32 years. Single-lane roads, 75 was not out there. Development, no one wanted it, but look at this city today, and we still have that opportunity. But we got to start. We got to begin, and maybe I'm asking you to go forward and please do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ed Fitzgerald, and then after that will be Mary Copeland, please.
Good evening. I'm Ed Fitzgerald. I live at 13100 Southampton Drive in Benita Springs. Let me first extend my thank you, thanks, to all the work you have done in this project. I believe it is well done, but not to my liking. I also would like to thank you for the good job you have done in promoting Benita Springs to the residents of Pelican Landing. I think you should keep it up, and I hope that they listen. Tonight's meeting confirms to us all that democratic government prevails in Benita Springs. Every decision that comes out of this Council affects us all in how we live and enjoy this great city. That this decision tonight, though difficult, should reflect your best judgment and the will of the people, and not the interests of those with financial concerns. I thank you for listening, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I have a second. I have another second.
Why beg for it? Go ahead.
I have two, 300 of these. I pay 90 cents each for them. You can get them at the door for a nickel apiece.
Boy, there's always a salesman in the crowd, isn't there? Okay, after, hi, Mary. After Mary will be Meg Jacobson. Okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, Council members, and Mayor Nelson, and City Manager.
And I'm going to ask you to speak up, or they're going to yell at you.
Okay. My name is Mary Copeland. I'm a resident of Benita Springs, have been for the past 13 years. I made a choice to move to the city of Benita. My husband and I checked out the East Coast. We came here to the West Coast, and what we saw, we really liked. And I would like to ask you, please, there is a reason that we've chosen to live here in the city of Benita. We have a resource that is very precious to us, and that is the water. And I'm asking you to do the right thing. The reports that have been done, I think, have been slanted towards development. I would like to see someone do a report on the aquifers. Do they do what they're supposed to do? I'm asking you to really think about the progress that the city is going to take. I know you have a difficult decision to make. I've been listening to the chamber. I've listened to other speakers. I have come to your meetings here. I've tried to read as many reports as I can. Lot of information, maybe I don't understand, but what I do understand is this is a wonderful city, and I would really like it not to be spoiled. You have a responsibility to the citizens of the city of Benita, and I'm asking you to please think about the people that are here, what they're having to say, and I would like not to see development in the DRGR. I would like you to do a moratorium so that we can really investigate and see what the right thing to do is. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Meg Jacobson, could you come forward? And after that will be Fred Forbes, please. That's all right, I'm going to skip you. That's it. I know.
Hi, I'm Meg Jacobson. I'm a citizen of Benita Springs, and I live in East Benita Springs in one of the gated communities. I only point that out because that's where it floods, but we're all going to have to pay the taxes when that gets screwed up. So this is not just an issue for us in East Benita Springs. It's an issue for the entire Council and for the entire population. I thank you for listening to us. I'm sure it must be a pain in the butt to have all these people show up, and you've worked so hard for so long and spent so much money, but don't vote for this tonight, okay? Because that's simple? Stop. I look at your motion and I say, "We're all saying the same thing. We should have a plan," right? Except both sides of the fence are saying we should have a plan, so clearly we should have a plan. What I would ask of you is that the plan be delayed. So this motion says approve land changes that would allow for increased density. Do not allow for increased density just yet, please. We need water quality, and we need a plan before you tell them it's okay to go ahead and do it. Because as soon as you say allow for increased density, that's what the plan will be. It will not at all consider the other things like the water quality and quantity. I told you the last time that I really think this is the most important decision you will make as city officials, for now and perhaps for the future. So if you don't want to billboard with all of your names up there for 10 years from now when we are so messed up because you moved a little too fast at this time, so I urge you, please do not develop the DRGR just yet. I urge you to please vote for a carefully crafted moratorium. I urge you to vote for an advisory council, and please go beyond short-term thinking to long-term thinking. I'm planning to live here quite a few more years, and I think some of us are too. Please vote your conscience, each one of you. This is about your conscience. This isn't just about what the chamber says or what the citizens say. Look at how many of us are here. This is obviously of critical importance to all of us, and we urge you, please, delay for now the development of the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Fred Forbes, would you please come forward?
Yeah, good evening.
And, excuse me, one second. And William Lewis, you are on deck, please. Go ahead.
First of all, this is not against development. It's a balancing of the environment and development. I am personally in favor of development, but I want it done after we know what we are doing, and the Baraco report is full of contradictions. The oldest report on the aquifer and the recharge is the one that the Baraco team has riddled through with discussions about how it doesn't recharge at all. The two that were after that say it significantly contributes to the recharge of not only the top aquifers, but the one, the shower wells that BSU get water from. So that's important. Another, it's just full of contradictions. In fact, I can't believe that that report was ever allowed to get printed with those kind of contradictions. It's on, they didn't reference hardly at all Roger Kopp's study, which was the most recent study on flooding. Now, we get all that stuff figured out, then we can do something out there. And Roger Kopp, I spoke to him after he spoke at the last meeting, and I said, "Roger, I want to find out from you what it would take in the increasing the design criteria for stormwater management." So we would either not aggravate flooding or improve flooding, or decrease it. And he said just what I've been saying. Somewhere between two and three times what the standard criteria is at South Florida Water Management would allow that to be developed. Now, for those of you that say how great Worthington and Palmera, Village Walk is, which are great communities, I live in Hunter's Ridge, guess what? If you've listened to Roger's presentation, he told you that when they built Village Walk and Palmera, it altered a good deal of the normal direction of the flow to the south. Just think about that. So we go in there and do this, we're going to probably muck it up some more. All we want is a one-year delay where no. All we want is a one-year delay where no comp plan amendments, no land use plan, or the flu map changed for one year. We want a task force, and I think the proposal that each council person names somebody. If seven isn't enough, make it double that, two per council member. If you do that, you're going to have some developers, you're going to have members of the chamber, you're going to have citizens. Let us work on it, but the other thing that's going to need to be done is we are going to need some people like the Livingston and the, I hope that's not my phone. No. Mr. Livingston and people like Kopp doing some of these analysis. That's what we need. That's what we want. We are not against development. Development doesn't have a four-letter word, and I only say this, a lot of the most strongest speakers tonight neither live in Bonita Springs nor have they been here even through one of the floods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be William Lewis, and following him will be Alan Farrar, please.
My name's William Lewis. I write a newsletter, Let's Talk Bonita Politics. First of all, I am against building out on the DR, period, number one. Number two, I'd like to refer you to briefly a news article, October 23rd, in the news press, and it states here that Mayor Nelson said, "The recommendations by Mr. Baracco is better than doing nothing. We can do some real good, real smart planning." Then, Mr. Schwing, city manager, sprung into action and immediately is going to ask you people for direction. Now, in reading this back in October, I may be wrong, but I can read and write, it seems to me that this is already a done deal. All you need is four votes, and all of these people can go home. They're asking you for your consideration. It's already been made, according to this article. Four votes, and you know you have them. It's a done deal. A moratorium, yes. A non-binding vote, which is unheard of in Bonita, but I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. And Alan Farrar, please come forward, and Brian Farrar, you are next. Now, Alan, you should have started walking like a long time ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? We're all watching. We're all waiting.
Hey, hey.
Yeah. Oh, that's not him.
That's not him.
Hey, hey, embarrass somebody. Brian, I'm sorry, everybody.
Apologize.
I'm sorry.
You're mocking a resident, mayor, mayor.
Brian, please come forward. You're next, because I just mocked someone and made them leave.
Are we going to recall these names?
And who's after you?
You know, I was looking outside. I mean, I was walking too slow.
Yeah, really. And Rick Steinmeier, you are up after Brian Farrar.
She shook it.
Okay, Brian, continue.
Good evening, mayor and city council. For the record, my name is Brian Farrar with BCF Management Group. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of my client, Citrus Park. First, I want to take a moment to thank you, the city staff, and the team of consultants that conducted the study. We appreciate the openness of the process and believe that they did a thorough job considering all the facts. We especially appreciate the opportunity to have input on the many facets of the report prepared by the experts. At the time that the study was conducted, we also attended the workshops to ensure we understood the perspective of all the other stakeholders during the public input process, which we believe to be very important to understand what's going to be the best for the Bonita Springs future. From that perspective, we noted that the scope of the work provided to the consultant was limited to certain tasks in order to make this a manageable effort to put together the framework for specific guidelines to use for a potential comprehensive land use plan amendment, given the city's potential growth in the next 10, 20, and 30 years. We also understand that the next steps in the process would include further review and scrutiny during the review by the LPA and the final adoption process. Unfortunately, however, we have found that this city initiated action for the third time has more recently been treated like a final zoning case, forcing the affected landowners to defend fictitious project proposals that they did not conceive, plan, or have any control of the variables of the design. With the many variables and scenarios suggested and portrayed by others, we further believe that the process had led others to have preconceived ideas as to what has transpired during the study. With that, we'd like to remind everyone that the process is only to establish a planning guideline for a potential design from and into the future of Bonita Springs. Given the turnout this evening, it seems many here are here to prosecute this as if it were a final zoning case. For all those who believe that this is the case, you can rest assured it is not. This is a planning tool to achieve a goal, a vision for the future of the community for growth, not for tomorrow, but for the long term. If you review the consultant's reports, all of the items referenced are for the long view, as it should be. To be shortsighted on such a big project item for the city is truly not the way to proceed. We recommend you direct staff to move forward thoughtfully and take the next step to amend the comp plan as suggested by the report. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Rick Steinmeier, please come forward, and the next speaker will be Conrad Schultz, please. Is Rick around?
I thought he left.
Rick left.
Conrad.
And so Conrad Schultz, are you around? There you are. Sorry. And the next speaker after Conrad will be Linda Schwartz.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson, city council members. It's good to be back in Bonita.
I can't hear you. Speaking to the mic.
As always, one. Go ahead and pull the microphone up a little bit there. There you go.
Thank you.
And speak right into it. Go ahead. Go ahead. You've been here before.
Once or twice. My name is Conrad Schultz, and I am a resident of Bonita Springs, and I'm here tonight to voice my concern over the speed in which the DRGR development proposal is moving forward. I've been following things while we were up north this summer, and I want to be sure that the water issues dealing with the aquifer and the flooding are being properly considered. It's clear to me now that I've read much of it, that the most recent Baracco study is more of a development proposal than it is a true study. It takes selected quotes from previous studies and presents them in a compelling fashion, but it's not a new study of the water issues done with today's available technologies. When my wife and I lived in central Massachusetts, I served on a number of town committees and boards, and as the chairman of the Industrial and Business Development Commission, I worked to attract industry and business to our town and worked intimately with the Chamber of Commerce in our area. So, I know firsthand the need for a broad and balanced tax base, but I do not trust some of the premises of the most recent DRGR proposal, especially as they seem to contradict prior goals, studies, and assumptions, and in particular as it relates to the aquifer that supplies our drinking water. We had some experience with aquifer issues where I lived in central Massachusetts for many years. One summer, a newly-built gas turbine electrical power generation plant in a bordering town which was over the state line ran into problems. The liner in a man-made reservoir which held water for the plant's cooling tower sprung a leak. They were faced with either finding water or shutting the plant down. Plant operators negotiated a contract with a large gravel mine operator in our town to tank water from a high-yield private well located on newly-zoned industrial land. That land was situated over the aquifer that supplied drinking water to the town and was about a half-mile west from the Blackstone River, which is one of the most heavily-used rivers in the United States. The gravel mine operator had a convincing way about him, was close to numerous town officials, and no one had any problems with the arrangement in the beginning, until private wells started to dry up and the state discovered that the Blackstone River itself, in fact, was drying up. The State Department of Environmental Protection stepped in and stopped the taking of the water, but it took some time for the aquifer to replenish, and new private wells had to be installed. Why am I telling you this story? Because the link between the Blackstone River's surface water and the aquifer was never considered, yet there was a clear relationship between the two. The Baracco report says there's no connection between the surface waters of the DRGR and the city of Bonita Springs drinking water. My instinct says that considering the shallow and tenuous nature of the southwest Florida aquifer in our region, that our future drinking water supply could be at risk. I'm asking that you seek the proper information that will affect the long-term viability of our community, and that this shouldn't be a sprint. Take the time to make this be a thoughtful walk and not a race. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Linda Schwartz, please come forward.
I'm going to pass.
Okay. And Josh Hulse, H-U-L-C-E. And are you? Oh, is there Josh? No? Patrick Van Ness. Patrick Van Ness? Okay. Bob Mo?
I'll pass.
Okay. Brad Cornell? No?
Where's Brad?
Brad Cornell?
Mr. Van Ness.
All right.
Chamber.
They want to talk. Yeah, you don't move.
And you might be Patrick Van Ness.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, for the record, Patrick Van Ness. I'm a certified planner with RWA, and also I'm a board member with the Bonita Chamber.
Can't hear you. Hold on.
Oh, they're tough tonight, kids.
Real close.
Go ahead. You've got to talk about that close to it.
Okay.
Go ahead and pull it down, right down to you. Pull it back to you a little bit.
I'll start over.
Okay. You got it.
Patrick Van Ness, certified planner with RWA, local engineering firm, and also a board member with the Bonita Chamber. I'm here to address the DRGR, and before I get started, I want to make it very clear that I do not own land in the DRGR, nor do I represent any landowners in the DRGR. I'm here to give you my professional opinion and also some personal opinions. A few weeks ago, I sent you a letter urging you to move forward with the recommendations from your consultant and to take action and to develop a new future land use category for the DRGR. I'm not going to reiterate every point I made in there, but I want to emphasize two items. The first one is that I truly believe that the do-nothing position is unrealistic and unfeasible. If you do nothing, I truly believe that development is still going to occur within the DRGR. It's going to occur incrementally. The city is going to miss the opportunity to work in collaboration with the development community, to have a concerted plan, a comprehensive plan, and a smart, balanced approach to development in that area. The second item that I want to emphasize is more of a personal opinion, and it's a concern that I have about how, a trend that I see in the politics and how public opinion is formed by what I feel is misinformation and, to be honest, fear-mongering. And I'm concerned with that. I have two young children. I chose to live in this area, and I choose to remain in this area, but if the attitude is going to be one of, "I've got mine, let's close the door, pull up the bridge," and that we're not going to have any change, I don't know if my children are going to want to stay here, and I really want them to. So, what I'm asking you is, when you make your decisions this evening, is to base your decisions on facts and evidence and not just, you know, who speaks loudest or how many people show up on a given side this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brad Cornell, I saw you pull in here. How you doing?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I want to applaud you. By the way, I'm speaking on behalf of Audubon, Florida, which owns Corkscrew Swamp Sanctuary, and also Audubon of the Western Everglades, which was formerly Collier County, Audubon.
And Brad, I'm going to give you a little more time, but I want to be sure that Curtis Clausen knows that he's next, okay? Go right ahead.
Sure. Audubon applauds you all for investing in effective planning for your DRGR. That's absolutely critical. I think you've heard that theme tonight. And I've read the proposed report from Baracco, and it's got lots of innovative ideas in there, including some leveraged ideas for paying for infrastructure and other needs. I also agree that there are serious problems in the DRGR, and so there was a need to look at these issues and find ways to address them. However, Audubon feels strongly that watershed issues of pollution and flooding must be addressed before intensifying land issues. I note that Roger Kopp, the author of the South Lee County Watershed Plan Update, provided some important strategies for watershed fixes in your October 16th meeting, including restoration of the Spring Creek watershed, conveyance, and water storage strategies. I will also note that there's a really vital connection between the watersheds of Bonita Springs DRGR and Lee County's DRGR. This is a really fundamental fact that needs to be addressed in any plan for this area. Accordingly, Audubon supports Councilwoman Simon's recommendation to appoint an expert panel in a very public process to identify an effective watershed plan to implement before intensifying land use. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. And Curtis Clausen, are you here, Curtis?
He's here.
No?
Yes, he's coming.
Come up. Oh, Curtis. I'm sorry.
She filled out the form, too, and we want to go together. Now, I know you're not going to sit by.
You can go right ahead. You come on up here.
I'm Sheree Clausen.
And you go ahead and speak right in the microphone, okay?
A year-round resident of Bonita Springs for 20 years, and I defer my three minutes to my son, Kurt.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That was nice. I think this process is good. I think clearly there's a new day in politics in Bonita Springs. What is good for the Chamber of Commerce and good for business is no longer automatically good for the city, and we're not just going to be asleep while it happens. Whatever the outcome is, we're here, we're awake, we're in the game, we're not going away. Citizen involvement is good, and if I listed all the people in my organizations, first I'd say to Fred, "Thank you, Fred Forbes, for having the willpower and the courage to bring us together to block this, or give it our best shot." I want to thank all my teammates, that we have put so much time and energy in there to reflect the will of the citizens. Fear-mongering, the will of the citizens? Somebody come up here, doesn't have money on the table, and tell us we're wrong. Hunters, Palmira, Ramo, WAC, Worthington, Pelicans, Banana, Harbor, Hawthorne, Pentagon, Cedar, Vanderbilt, Fairways, Island, Conservacy, these are the people of Bonita, the white shirts. Look, we're not, let me quote the words of our mayor in a recent email. "Victory by our side of the people in white would be a victory of false emotional rhetoric and nothing else." That's the leader in an email. Now, let me tell you something. I drove up here in an F-150 with a Rousch Supercharger and Ford Racing pipes. I am not driving a Prius over here, and I'm not buying into some false, left-wing, environmental rap. No. Our opinions matter too, mayor. They do. And this ain't even a close vote. You got the money over here, you got the money over here, you got city staff right here, and you got everybody else that's unconvinced, and they're saying, "Stop." Or almost everybody else.
We'll have the white T-shirt sign up.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to address your comments to this. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to address your comments to this council.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize.
Go right ahead.
I don't think the vote is close. If it went to the people, I don't think the vote is close. And I think that the city council ought to heed the will of the people. And if you need more leadership to convince the people, then convince them. Don't criticize them into buying off on something that we just don't, we can't understand. I don't buy it. I find the people that I served with on this group to be reasonable, intelligent people who have done meaningful things with their lives. I think people on the other side, intelligent people, that are doing what's in their best interest and what they think is best for our city as well, but the vast majority of the people aren't with you. And I think we ought to heed the will and the voice of the people. The developers say that the way to clean the water is to develop more. That might be true. I say the Baraco study doesn't prove it. I say the Baraco study doesn't prove it. We want water that when you go in the Gulf or in the river, you can see it. Air that when you breathe it, you can't see it. And green places for our animals to live. And if we're going to get a plan in place, then get one that everybody can be sure that that gets accomplished. I don't think that that's asking too much. And if you think this is it, then convince us further, because we're not on board yet. My final point is this. How much development do you want, so we don't have the debate in isolation? What's the strategic plan for the city? How many people do you want? How much revenue do you want? How much development do you want? What's the global plan, so therefore, we don't have to have this debate in isolation? All of those that are in white shirts with me today against this plan, will you please stand up?
No, you will not.
Oh, I apologize. Apologize, apologize. I thought that was allowed, Mayor.
You carry on.
I sincerely apologize. I thought that was -- so, look, I think that the people -- Mayor, you said a month ago in our meeting that when this decision comes down, that everybody needed to accept it. I say that the will of the people is here, and we all need to accept that. And so in terms of development, until we get convinced, I say, "Stop." I say, "Back off." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dan Wagner. Would Dan Wagner, are you there, Dan? Come on forward, Dan.
Can't find you.
I'm not saying that you can't see everything. And then after that is Sheri Clausen, please.
Name is Dan Wagner, Worthington Country Club.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we got it.
Been a resident in Benita Springs.
Well, now we can't, because you're not talking into the microphone.
Thank you, sir. I've been a resident in Benita Springs since, full-time resident since '98. Worthington Country Club, past president there, presently on External Affairs Committee, And I say good evening to the Mayor Nelson and to the council members. Been a tough night from both sides of the story for you. If you've noticed, and it was mentioned before by Kurt, that there's a lot of T-shirts here tonight, a lot of white T-shirts here tonight. Ninety percent of those people wearing those white T-shirts live on the eastern part of Benita Springs, off Benita Beach Road, very close to the DRGR. We're frightened. Those people here are frightened of what's going to happen to our community. We've already had flooding problems, and some of the communities there. Naturally, we're all concerned. We've seen it happen time again, three times, that I've known, since I've been here. It's not a good problem. There's something wrong. And I don't see putting houses and lifting the house up so the water can run down and come further toward us as a solution. And I don't think you see it as a solution either. If you do, I think there's something very wrong. I also want to talk to the council members, other than the council member that represents District Six. The other council members should be looking at this vote, or this problem, the same way if they were representing District Six. Not that they live in a different part of the community, or represent different people who elected them, because it's going to be just as nasty for Benita Springs, and they're going to have their problems from this. Drinking water problems, potentially, tainted water problems, potentially, floodwaters that also could come to the entire city and go as far as the beaches, and taint the beach. That's possible. Now, why would you guys want to vote for those potential problems? Now, I know there's got to be some development out there at some point, but just don't say it's going to happen, you're going to open it up, and open the doors, and everybody's going to come flying in and pay us some money so that they can develop, and the Chamber of Commerce can make some more money and so forth. And the potential for our community and the city is negative. It needs to be studied. It needs to go farther before we place ourselves in jeopardy. What's the rush? What's the rush? A DRGR's been there for quite a while. Think about it. Nothing's happened. Why? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dan. Sheri Clausen. Are you around?
She gave her time.
She gave her time. Oh, that's right. I apologize. Tori Polonica, are you here, Tori? Okay. And after that will be Kathy McGrath.
Hi. Tori Polonica, 20-year resident of the DRGR. And I'd like to thank the city council and Baraco and Associates for all the work they're doing. I agree with a lot that's been said this evening, and I am definitely on the side of the city moving forward. I have written a couple notes. One is that the biggest problem I have is with the designation of it being DRGR. It has been proven that it doesn't fit the DRGR, and so the land use, not looking for an increase in zoning or anything, but a land use designation change. Second of all, I see on a lot of the T-shirts that I respect everyone's opinion, but I see it's "Keep Our Water Clean." It's not keeping it clean, at present it is not clean. And for me, the septics, the agricultural, of which I am a part, I am agriculturally zoned, and I am a horse trainer, and I do have horses on my property. But the dumping of oil, antifreeze, coolants, the garbage, the lack of control out there, what I see is leaving it as a DRGR designation is development without a plan. And the other point, the two points, is, one, it's a development without a plan, and it's inadequate funding. We do not have the funding for a lot of what people are asking for. So a partial compromise with some development, if that would increase the funding, because I hear a lot of very nice ideas, but no money. And I have to say that as being agriculturally zoned and owning the amount of land I do, you couldn't buy dinner on what I pay taxes on my property in East Benita. And that's why nothing gets changed. And I know I'm saying something against my own pocketbook, but it's true. The land is not bringing anything into the city financially. And also, as far as taking our time, let me just tell you that the meetings I came to, beginning in the DRGR, I had to go to the county, because we weren't even a city yet. And I have seen several mayors, and a lot of city council people change over the years, always still talking about studying, and "Let's not hurry on the DRGR." Well, we're not hurrying, folks. This is 20 years that I've been doing it. So I just wanted to say, for all of those people who have not been involved in it quite as long as I have, there's, nobody's rushing here. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you very much, sir. Kathy McGrath, please, and followed by Deborah McLean.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. Smile, everyone. I am speaking for myself. I've owned property here for over 46 years, and I've lived here year-round for 30 years. And yes, I remember when the Troes were developing that property there, and I just wonder if some of these people here know exactly where this property is located, because first of all, it's not the whole DRGR. It's a portion of it. It's a portion of it. And it lies three miles north of Benita Beach Road. I talked it. I know the property, I remember it. I was here before I-75, before US-41. And I wonder if the people who are protesting or wanting to delay have actually taken a look at this property. Right now, well, first of all, I am absolutely in favor of you moving forward, and I hope everyone realizes, this is not something written in stone that you're going to allow development. It's just step one to move forward. Now, right now, that property, I believe it's more or less 750 people could build there, with septic tanks. Benita Springs Utilities is not going to run infrastructure for one house here and one house there. It has to be a planned development. And for all of those people concerned about their water supply, Benita Springs Utilities has planned for this for years. We have the reverse osmosis plant. They can supply all the water that is needed. It is not going to impact their potable water. As far as restoring the aquifer, when my late husband was on the board of BSU over 20 years ago, the study said it was not recharging it, and subsequent studies say the same thing. The consultants have excellent credentials. Sure, there may be some things you don't like about it. Number one, I can quote a lady, because it was in the paper, the Daychuck family has lived out there for years, okay? They had no flooding in all the major floodings. There are no major flowways in this area being discussed, none at all. Unfortunately, I think a lot of people that spoke tonight said it's so much better than I could, and you all know me, so you know who I'm agreeing with, okay? But a lot of the silent majority, they either are, they don't care, or they aren't going to take the time, or it's going to be all right, so they just keep their mouth shut and sit on their hands. I don't think you need a moratorium, not a timed moratorium. My suggestion is, yes, I think there should be a task force, but not a person per council or two. Here are my suggestions. Someone from South Florida Water Management, Phil Flood, Mr. Barber, the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, Benita Springs Utilities, the Chamber, someone from City Planning, a developer with no ties to anyone who has any property in that area. And I don't think there should be a lot of environmental groups. I mean, I like Sierra, I like Audubon, but I think the Conservancy should be one. And I do think that local citizens should be part of it, too. But, you know, let's make sure that there are people with an open mind, not nailed shut, that are willing to listen to facts and figures, because there's a lot of people here with misunderstandings. I don't care what's presented to them, they're going to say, "No, no, no." But move forward with this. This is just step one, and I'm behind you 100%. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Deborah McLean, please, and then after that will be Alex Grant.
I'm Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. And we have come here today from all corners of our world, the six city districts. We ask that you neither accept nor reject the Baraco study, but that you merely acknowledge receipt, as we have found this study to be inadequate. We request a two-year moratorium that is effective immediately closing the 30-day loophole. That a seven-member impartial task force be formed to review the completed impact studies on our water runoff into our rivers and creeks, potable water, and increased costs to each of us, agricultural contamination, and the future impact of the proposed sprawl on the residents of the city of Benita Springs. No one else has mentioned the impact of sprawl on the existing parts of the city. This is a huge economic determinant, and it's not been figured in. First, the water, and then the impact of more development. Sprawl, many, many articles coming out every day on LinkedIn about the negative impact of overdevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alex Grant, please come forward, and after that will be Scott Duvall.
Alex Grant, 11-851 East Terry Street. I'm an owner of five acres since 1959, resident since 1980, bachelor's degree in chemistry, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, master of soil science degree, North Carolina State University, member of the local planning agency in 2000, 2004, member of the city council from 2004, 2008. And I had flooding on my property 1993, 1995, and I did have water on my property just now, this past year. We are all paying for professors and graduate student, graduate school assistants at the University of Florida Soils and Water Department in Gainesville. It would take the city only the cost of motel rooms, food expenses, and gas expense from Gainesville, Florida to Benita Springs to have these people examine the DRGR area regarding the water flow rates in the hydroxyl areas of this city, especially in the Imperial River watershed, as well as Estero River watershed, which impact southwest Florida, especially how it affects Benita Springs and its residents. I also sent the city council an article from the Chemical Engineering News, American Chemical Society, of which I'm a member, about developing powerful solar energy cells producing electric power in this area without detrimental effects of placing thousands of people in a water flow area, not causing excess pollution, as well as flooding problem areas for many residents of this city during summer storm events, which happen often. No engineer, no matter how good, can fool Mother Nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott Duvall, please come forward, and after that will be Alberto Bayer, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Scott Duvall. I'm an attorney here in Benita Springs. As you can see by the vast number of people here, we've got a pretty major decision before you today. And I think it's been pointed out, the decision is not how much development in the DRGR. The decision is, do we accept the studies, multiple studies, for what they're worth, and make a decision to move forward? Or do you make the cowardly decision of saying, "No, we're going to do what other city councils have done in years past after receiving multiple studies, and sit on our hands and do nothing?" So I think the decision today is, are you going to be courageous or cowardly? And I think the decision really lies with you, that the funds that have been expended on studying that area are tremendous, and I think if we continue to do nothing, and continue to punt this decision down the road, and continue to waste more money, because I'm sure that next city council, heaven forbid that happens, will want to study it again, and I think it's just a waste. It's a tremendous waste of time and resources and taxpayer dollars. So I urge you, I remember when the Hopshman Mine was being annexed into the city 10 years ago or so. It came before the city, and a large number of people came up and said, "Don't annex, because they're going to develop it." That wasn't the decision. The decision was, do we annex the property, in which case the city then has control over the development, or do you not annex it and allow the development to continue with what Lee County decides to do? That first go-around, it was not annexed into the city out of fear. I think that city council originally decided not to move forward out of fear. And I'm afraid that's what's happening here, is this council is afraid, perhaps some of you are afraid, to move forward and make the right decision, because there are a large number of people who are very concerned about the development that's going to take place in the DRGR. That's a decision for another day. Today, we're talking about, do you move forward? That's it. I strongly encourage you to make the right choice, the courageous choice, the choice that's right for the city, move forward with this study, and approve moving forward with the study. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Alberto Bayer, and then be followed by Ron Pure, please.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a request. My computer just ran out of battery, and I just plugged it in, and it's just recharging so that I can draw the document that I'll be reading.
Would you like somebody to come before you?
If you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you kindly.
Ron, are you prepared? Ron Pure, please come forward.
Good evening, Ron Pure, Taxpayer Action Group. I don't get it. You don't have to vote to accept what we've paid for as taxpayers. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I don't get why. I don't get what the last guy was referring to. Is it not true that you guys get the consultant report that they produced for the money that we're going to be paying for them? You can do that without voting on anything tonight, can't you?
Well, go ahead and finish your comments.
Okay. Well, we all know you can. The Estero Bay, another, Estero Bay Agency of Bay Management, another group that's behind at least part of what has been offered up so far with respect to the DRGR. I really don't know what to make of this letter, but you all got a copy of it, and it's rather lengthy, but I'll close, I'll close the letter here.
Ron, you have to talk into the microphone.
I'll close the letter from the Estero Bay Management.
That was a draft and not adopted.
Martha, please.
It wasn't adopted.
Thank you. Go ahead. Ron, Ron, continue.
Let me get to the last paragraph. It says, "Your consultants have devised a system by which the various landscape scale land use plans can be further gamed to achieve important public objectives." If we can be of any further assistance, don't hesitate to call us. Now, let me remind everyone what the vocabulary word "gamed" means, and I like the second, the second interpretation here. It says manipulate a situation typically in the way that is unfair or unscrupulous. It was very fair and easy for a few big companies to game the system. And that's kind of what's been going down here for many years with respect to the DRGR from purview of myself and others. You've got a whole group of people, or a whole bunch of groups of people that are backing at least your acceptance of this, and of course, certainly moving forward incrementally in the future to develop the hell out of it. Enough of that. Did you all know that Florida has six, or is it five, of the top-ranking most stressful cities in the United States?
Yeah, is this one of them?
Now, you know, if anyone's interested, I'll give them the composite as to what the basis is for having come to that conclusion. These are professionals as well, people that liken themselves to consultants and offering and proffering up solutions to problems and insights into certain things. I see what you folks are engaging in here as an opportunity to move forward slowly but surely with the build-out of this area. We are, again, we were certainly a part of the Everglades. We've got, we've got production going on 20 or 30 miles south of us, which is barely off the ground. They have not yet dealt with that problem, and you know how many billion, billions are going to be spent on their endeavor to do that. There's just too much here, and I don't have enough time, nor will I be allowed enough time to engage in some other conversation and tidbits for all you folks to consider. But I'd say, grab the consultant's report and put it in the file with all the others. There's no need to move forward here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, Alberto, are you, are you ready?
I'll go at the end if it's.
We are at the end. I'm, go ahead and have a seat for a second, and I'm going to see if anybody else is here, or, why don't you just wait for a second. I'm going to call these names that were missed, and be sure I don't miss anybody. Marcy, Marcy Kubaka? Kubaka, no? Okay, I'm going to give it another try. Also, Wendy Fowler? No? Do you want to be sure I missed anybody? William Campos? No? Adam Ginsburg? Alan Furor? No? Rick Steinmeier? He would have, he would have already been here.
Hi, Rick.
Okay, hi, Rick. And Josh Hulse? Hulse? No? Okay, you're on, Alberto?
Alberto Bayer, Bonita Springs resident since 1991, city council. Good evening. From a federal, i.e. national, perspective, government, my friends, is the problem. All we have to do is turn to the Obamacare fiasco and readily recognize how huge an infusion of private initiative capital is desperately required in this nation. This is particularly true at the municipal level, and Bonita Springs is certainly not the exception. Like his mother, I too almost decided to yield my four minutes to our Gentile resident who despite El Dictator's tantrums, so eloquently attempted to speak in our representation in the face of formidable opposition. A perfect example, five years ago, after I had been cleared by the then-current city manager to give five, 10-minute presentations relative to the city management discrepancies, including but not limited to the Bonita Springs Utility Sewer System Installation. In violation of the Sunshine Law, the councilman of my district, who had strategically met with other elected council to stonewall me, motioned to change the city law so that residents would no longer be allowed such privilege.
Alberto, I'm, I'll give you a time, additional time, because of my question, but I want to know that this has got something to do with an agenda item, does it?
Yes, I'm about to.
Okay, good. You're going to make a connection. Go, carry on.
Thank you for not representing formidable opposition to me also.
Go right ahead.
El Dictator.
But it's always there under the surface.
An adva.
Go, go right ahead.
Thank you, however, for making my point, because this just indeed highlighted my point The truth of the matter is that our city is, and of course, I'm going to have to be spontaneous here, because when the battery died, I lost the rest of my, thank you, but, but our city is economically, ecologically, and emotionally crippled. Economically, well, all you have to do is see what our main arteries, 41 and Old 41, are in deplorable condition, and indeed diminishingly so, which, for example, the much-needed moratorium of development would be indeed a boosting dynamic to offset that if we had indeed intelligent city planning. Ecologically, our riverways are indeed impaired. Us has been categorically determined by the experts that we have so generously paid inefficiency, inefficiently. And emotionally, I think I'm done, huh? Is this?
No, you go ahead, take one more minute.
Emotionally.
I did take some from you. Go right ahead.
Thank you, indeed. The Lee County Sheriff's agenda is remarkably hostile to a certain demographic who is brutally abused in a fashion that is indeed remarkable, and I happen to be part of that demographic, so I've been a victim thereof. And then also, they're boosting the drug dealing in a fashion that is, to me, out of control, and yet when people like I.
Alberto, could you go ahead and sum up, please?
I'm about to finish.
In the last few minutes, okay? No, fast, two seconds.
Tried to put together neighborhood watches based on the template that is recommended by the federal program, they actually have deliberately impeded it.
Okay. And if you want to continue these comments at the next public comment, you're welcome to do so, okay?
I will indeed. Are there any more public comments than today?
There will be more public comments by just like every night.
This evening?
Plug your computer in and get ready, okay?
At the end of the meeting?
At the end, middle of the meeting.
All right, I'll stick around.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Rick Steinmeier, please come forward.
All right, thank you. Oh, he's going to lose his seat. Thank you so much. Lucky.
Keep the mayor waiting. Come on, let's go.
Okay. Yeah, I had to go to Bible study and back, all right. It worked, too. What the heck can I say, you know, 6 o'clock in the hour?
All right.
Okay.
All right, carry on.
Okay. I'll give you my normal. Okay, I am Rick Steinmeier, elected mayor of survey for life.
Oh, excuse me.
I am the government. You are the government. These people are the government in this country, and we will have what we want. This relates to 6A. I want to tell you the story of the three-legged pig.
They can't hear.
Steady, steady.
The three-legged pig.
Steady, let's go.
The salesman, the salesman comes up to his house, and before he gets a knock on the door, this pig comes squealing around, and on three legs, comes up, and squealing, squealing, and wouldn't let him get to the door. So the owner of the house opens the door, and the pig hobbles into the house. The salesman says, well, hey, what's the story with this pig? The owner says, that pig saved our lives. It's a very special pig. He saved our lives when there was a fire, and he squealed and woke us up, and we were able to save our house, and nobody was hurt. Very valuable pig to us. The salesman says, well, what happened to his leg and his ham? He says, well, he's very so valuable, we didn't want to eat him all at once. DRGR. Okay, now, history. We give a little history here. Between 1945 and '55, Lee County population quadrupled. Around 1960, the Florida said, no more dredge and fill. They used to dredge and fill and build canal lots like off of Pennsylvania Avenue. It was common practice then. Cape Coral, Marco Island were built that way. Around 1965, Lee County changed the building requirements from 50-foot front to 50-foot front for 40-foot frontage. Old 41 area is still grappling with this change. Around 1960, Lee County changed rural agricultural land from one house to an acre, to one house to 10 acres. The landowners were not compensated for this taking, because they said, we didn't take all of your value, only 90% of it. We are the government, and we should have our own way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, we are through public comments. See, that wasn't such a chore, was it? Thank you, and thank you for all your conduct. Thank you so much. You did awesome. I am so proud of all of you. Now, at this time, we don't have any proclamations or presentations, correct, except for Mr. Livingston.
Can we take a break?
Mr. Livingston, I presume? I've been waiting for that all night.
Mayor, can we? That's why I didn't go forward and get my PhD.
God bless.
Are we ready, Mr. Mayor?
You have at it.
All right. This is what I needed right here.
There you go.
First off, thank you very much for allowing me to come before you. I am going to talk some about the Northeast Quadrant Land Use Plan, but I really want to make sure that you all are aware of a very vague, obscure, but extremely important issue to all local governments, and that's how do you deal with development and stormwater discharges within the watershed of an impaired water body? So let's start with, what is an impaired water body? It's a water body that is not, you need to get closer to the mic.
Can we have a mic?
Hold on one second.
Oh, great.
There you go. It actually works.
Thank you, Mayor.
There you go. Talk right into it.
All right, thank you very much. My neck doesn't turn, if you may have noticed that. I've got arthritis, so.
You really got to put that up there.
Yeah, all right. So let me get back to it. All right. First thing is, what's an impaired water body? It's a water body that does not meet, let me start my watch, I apologize.
I got you.
All right. My designated, it does not meet their water quality standards and some of their designated uses, such as fishing, swimming, or potable water supply.
Okay, sorry about that, ladies and gentlemen, okay? So we got these impaired water bodies, okay? Now, these impaired water bodies are addressed in both the Federal Clean Water Act and the Florida Watershed Restoration Act that was passed in 1999. And in particular, the Department of Environmental Protection is charged with evaluating water quality data and determining which water bodies are healthy, which water bodies are impaired, and adopting a verified list of impaired water bodies. Yes, sir, thank you. All right. And then the fun really begins, because once a water body is impaired, now need to develop a total maximum daily load, TMDL. That's a pollutant loading cap for that water body that determines what's the maximum allowable pounds that can go into that water body and have it be healthy, okay? Now, you also see this little equation here up at the top, WLA, that stands for wasteful allocation. That's the allowable pounds and the required load reduction for point sources of pollution, domestic and industrial wastewater systems, and your master drainage system, okay?
Please, everyone.
The second one is the load allocation. That's the allowable load and the required reductions for non-point sources, such as septic tanks and stormwater and from, and things of that nature. And then there's the margin of safety, okay? So let's, I want to make sure everybody knows those terms. Now, what are we concerned about? The major impairments in this state are related to nutrients. We have too many green water bodies, but we also have water bodies that don't have enough oxygen and have too much fecal coliform bacteria. Now, where are the problems coming from? Mainly from non-point sources. We've done a good job of managing point sources and getting rid of those, and we reclaim that water and reuse it now. But where our problems are is, number one, stormwater from existing development. We were the first state to require stormwater treatment back in 1982, but everything built before that was this highly efficient drainage system that sends all of that water and polluted right to our nearest water body. So that's the hardest thing to do. You got to go back in and retrofit your plumbing system. You also got to make sure that any new development, redevelopment comes along doesn't add to the problem, and we need to address agriculture and septic tanks as well, okay? So let me talk about the stormwater problem a little. We humans, we change the landscape, okay? What do we do? We clear the vegetation, we compact the soil, we pave over the soil, we put in highly efficient drainage systems, we add pollutants. So what happens? First, we have less water, less rain that goes back into the ground and recharges our groundwater tables, and that's important in maintaining lake levels, river levels, and our wetlands, okay? And it can't get in because we've compacted that soil and paved over it. Instead, we have increased speed of runoff, increased volume of runoff, and increased pollutant loads. And where this really comes home is when we get into a situation where I need a stormwater discharge, but I've got an impaired water body. The basic standard for getting a permit is, you can't cause or contribute to a violation of a water quality standard, but this one's already violated. It's impaired. So the bottom line is, you can't add any more pollutants to that water body. Now, the legislature recognized this, and in order to avoid having, building moratoriums all over the state, they came up with a new level of treatment. It's called net improvement, which means that the pollutant loading after development from that site is less than it was before the site was developed. That's a hard thing to do, ladies and gentlemen. Now, here in Bonita Springs, you're lucky right now. You've only got one total maximum daily load that you're having to deal with. Jacksonville's got about 10 of them, okay? So you're fortunate yet, and in this Imperial River, we've got a 25% total reduction of nitrogen that needs to occur from your master drainage system. And once a TMDL is developed, now that becomes post-development is less than pre-development minus that additional 25%. Otherwise, that load's going into your system, and who's going to end up having to reduce it? You and your taxpayers are. So let's talk about MS4 permits. This, you are one of about 325 local governments in the state of Florida that has what we call an NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It's the federal point source permits that DEP now administers and issues, okay, for your MS4. That's your municipal separate storm sewer system. It's your master drainage system. So all your stormwater discharges are covered by one permit, and you have to implement a comprehensive stormwater management program that's aimed at reducing these stormwater pollutant loads. Now, when a TMDL comes along, you got added responsibilities. We issued your most recent permit in 2011 that had lots of new requirements if you have total maximum daily loads, including you had to submit a TMDL prioritization plan that was submitted and approved by me in May of 2012, and you are now going to have to do some monitoring and come up with your own TMDL implementation plan. Now, how are you going to deal this? Well, first off, you got to think about how do we reduce the loads from all these drainage systems? That means going in and doing regional retrofit projects. Good example down the road is Freedom Park. It also means incorporating non-structural pollution prevention BMPs and everything that we all do, and making sure that all new development and redevelopment meets that net improvement standard so that that cost and liability don't go on to your taxpayers. Now, one of the things I liked when I started looking at your documents is, the concept of sustainability was there. But what is sustainability? But what is sustainability? It's the interdependence of societal needs, economic needs, and environmental needs and meeting that sweet spot in the middle. Now, I can't tell you whether your plan meets the economic and societal. That's not my provision. But I can tell you, it's not meeting the sweet spot with regard to environmental protection. And what needs to happen is you need to get the water right, as you've heard. The plan has some good concepts, but it's very lacking in specifics. It talks about low-impact development. Let me show you, folks, that's not a silver bullet. It's important, some new tools, but it's not a silver bullet. The South Florida Water Management District Stormwater Rules will not, by themselves, achieve your desired objectives. And finally, in order to get that 25 percent reduction, you're only proposing a 10 percent in this proposal right now. So, let's start with some performance standards you might want to think about. Ultimately, you want to make sure that the stormwater characteristics after development are less than they are occurring out there now. The other thing you want to make sure of is that you don't decrease the recharge of groundwater because that's going to alter your wetlands and water levels down the road. This requires a very, 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 very high level of treatment. Now, keep in mind that the typical wet detention pond, which is the most commonly used BMP in South Florida, after all, we can sell lakefront property and get fill, you know? It only gets 35 percent nitrogen removal, 55 percent phosphorus removal, okay? To get net improvement, you're looking at 96 percent removal. You can't achieve that using the traditional stormwater BMPs. You need to use a combination of structural and non-structural, including some of these low-impact designed BMPs. And you do this as part of an overall treatment train. In the past, all we've cared about is that last component. "Oh, I've got a retention system," or "I've got a detention system." That's not going to get you where you need to be for your total maximum daily loads. What you need to stress is the first car in the train, source controls. How do I minimize the generation of stormwater in the first place? How do I minimize the pollutants from getting into that stormwater in the first place? And that's where pollution prevention and low-impact development can come into play. Okay? So, what determines what a site looks like? Parking lots have to be my pet peeve. You know, we create these asphalt deserts as habitat for our cars. And it's what our communities become. But there are alternatives. These are low-impact development types of parking lots. The one down here in the lower corner, you've got pervious concrete for the parking stall going to a recessed retention basin. The one on the right side, you can see the recessed again with the trees planted. And the one up in the top is just a wonderful system integrated into the landscaping. That's what innovation can do. So, let's talk a little bit about low-impact development. What is it? It's a new concept that's come along in the last 15 years, where hydrology, the water, is the integrating factor of the planning, okay? And it starts with watershed planning, and then it gets down to site planning. And it starts with minimization of disturbance, protecting the existing vegetation and trees. Trees are an incredible stormwater management BMP that provide millions of dollars of free stormwater management every year. They intercept the runoff, so it does -- the rain, so it doesn't become runoff, okay? You want to minimize soil compaction, minimize impervious and pollution. How do you do this? Pollution prevention on one side, mitigation on the other, mainly through what we call infiltration best management practices. But if you have to do wet ponds, you can now maybe do wet ponds with stormwater harvesting, using that water for irrigation so you don't discharge it downstream. Now, most BMPs that we talk about are infiltration, but here's the problem with your report, your plan. There's no specifics in that thing. Uses that term a lot, but which BMPs, which low-impact development BMPs are going to be used? Where? Are the soil and water table conditions even appropriate for those BMPs? Will the existing trees be protected? Will future landscaping be based on the Florida Flannin Landscaping Program? How come only 40 percent of the homes are having LID? If it's good for one, why is it not good for all? And why is it only for residential? The greatest impact for low-impact design is on the commercial. They have properties. They have much higher imperviousness, much higher stormwater volumes, much higher pollutant loads, yet they're not even talked about. Is pervious pavement required? What about green roofs? And then, how are you going to design all this stuff? Who's got the design criteria for low-impact design BMPs? And then, how are you going to evaluate it? Now, we do have a good model that helps you do evaluate it that's been developed at the University of Central Florida, and I highly recommend that. Let's talk about infiltration a little bit. You've got either do retention or detention. That's your two options for stormwater. Retention's the absolute best thing you can do. Puts the water back into the ground or it evaporates, reduces the volume, which reduces flooding and pollutant loading. Best thing you can do. Why don't we do it everywhere? Because you've got to have proper soil and water table conditions. An infiltration system works much like a septic drain field. The water sits there, goes down through the sandy soil at least two feet, and eventually gets to the groundwater. Need at least two feet below the bottom and the groundwater for that to occur, and the more you've got, the better it is. These are infiltration system design criteria that have been in effect for many, many, many years, okay? And it doesn't matter whether it's for retention or pervious pavement. Bottom line is, you need good soils, what we call hydrologic soil group A or B soils that will percolate, that don't have a high water table. You need good test data from each site to check the soils and the water table. You need to do proper construction to make sure that you don't clog that system or you don't compact the soil so it doesn't infiltrate anymore. And finally, you need at least two inches an hour, so you've got to make sure you do maintenance to keep that system working over time. Now, will infiltration work in this area? Well, I went to the USDA NRCS Soil Survey. And this is the map of the detailed soil survey for this area, and guess what? Most of the soils here are what we call a B/ D soil. It means they have a high water table and they may not perk very well. So, is low-impact development going to work? Maybe, but maybe not. So, talking about the plan, you know, TMDL requires a 25 percent reduction, and I applaud whoever put the plan together for thinking about net improvement and 10 percent, but it's not enough. That's not going to assure your goal of sustainability and protecting your downstream waters and especially restoring Imperial River. It will lead to an increase in total nitrogen loading, and if that gets into your city's MS4, guess who's stuck with cleaning that up? You and your taxpayers. Here's a big part. Neither South Florida Water Management District nor your local codes have explicit design criteria for low-impact design BMPs. Now, one of the last things I was charged with working at DEP was a statewide stormwater treatment rule that incorporated these, but they've never been adopted yet. And finally, the plan does not demonstrate that these LID BMPs are going to work in this area because of the soil and water table conditions. Now, one of the things that really excited me about this project was something similar to what I'm working with in Pinellas County. They've got a little different issue in Pinellas County. They're totally built out. Everything from now on in Pinellas County is redevelopment. But they recognize that, just as you have, redevelopment addresses, needs to address other issues. And so, they've turned this, they've coined this term, urban regeneration. I think it's a great term, you know, because you're looking at all the various things, the economics, the societal needs, the water needs. It's complex, and you need complex solutions as well. Now, in Pinellas County, they're focusing all this around their water because water drives that economy. And I'm pretty sure it's the same thing down here. Because the bottom line is Florida, lifeblood, is clean water. Whether it's for ag, industry, recreation, or bringing the tourists down here, our economic vitality depends on clean water. Now, in Pinellas County, they've been going through this process for several years. They started with a vision, much like you have. In fact, your document has many visions, depending upon which one you want to choose. But the next thing is, you've got to establish the institutional framework to make that vision work and get all the information you need. Currently, we're working with the county to modify their land development code and incorporate low-impact design, to create stormwater treatment requirements that exceed state standards because they've got impaired waters throughout the county, a new stormwater manual, which we hope to have finished here within about three more months, and watershed plans with regional retrofits of facilities because in many cases, you can't achieve net improvement on-site to get so much on-site, and then there's a partnership with downstream regional facilities. And then finally, and this is what's, this is all going to wrap up next year sometime, then they're going to sit down and get down to the nitty-gritty of the public and private partnerships that need to be done. Conclusion, the Northeast Quadrant Plan creates a vision and offers an opportunity for urban regeneration. But success depends on ensuring all three components of sustainability are met. And right now, you are not meeting the environmental sustainability. To accomplish this, you need a lot more details on getting the water right. You're going to need local land development code revisions to adopt low-impact design policies and specific low-impact development best management practices and design criteria. You may want to consider a manual and a code, just like Pinellas County's putting together. And the bottom line is, ladies and gentlemen, getting the water right will ensure that the citizens of Benita Springs are not the ones that end up paying for any increased pollutant loads that come out of whatever changes you decide to make. Thank you again for the opportunity tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Nicely done. Nicely done. Before we go to the next presenter, any questions in particular from council?
With the land development code, we have a well field out there. I don't know if you noticed, okay? And we have lots of studies about the recharge there, okay? And we need to update our well field protection code. I've been reading a lot of land use studies about well field protection overlays. And what, I don't know if you have an opinion about this, but what level of density? I mean, I've been reading something about one per acre is the recommended density for a well field overlay. I don't know if there's a standard that you know of or what the discussion is.
Now, I've never seen one standard, and I think it's dangerous when you start talking about one size fits all because, you know, well fields are very different. Each one may have its own different susceptibilities and risks, so now, I can't speak to say, yeah, that should be the density.
I want to ask everyone, as you exit, please be as quiet as possible, okay? Thank you very much. Go ahead. Any more questions?
Well, and the other thing is, you were talking about retention's just the greatest thing going since, you know, sliced bread. But what about reconnecting flowways? I know we've heard a lot of, well, not, actually, we haven't really heard a lot of things that we should be doing with the water, and I think that's why people are kind of concerned because we only have a limited specific area which is impacted by a very big area. And then it might impact a big area. It's kind of a, you know, a pass-through place. It's very important to us. So, is creating flowways within that area going to be helpful? I'm not talking about ditching and dicking, but like maybe recreating some flowways.
Well, I think that's why additional information is needed. And additional thought is needed in terms of what are your final objectives? I mean, the bottom line is, this is an area where many different flow paths come together. And the bottom line is, you've got to look at this on a watershed basis because water doesn't care about political boundaries. It's going to follow watershed boundaries, okay? So, you need to look at that entire watershed and how the water flows into it and out of it.
And I guess the last is, how do we, as laypeople, because none of us are professional engineers or professional geologists or hydrologists, how do you know when the science is right?
Well, I mean, you just have to hope that you've got the necessary technical information that you need in order to make good scientific conclusions, and then hopefully those conclusions can be used in setting public policy.
Right. I think, in my opinion, basing it on the science. You know, we've got two sides going on in this room. We're a quarter and three quarters, but, you know, you don't base a decision on that. You base it on science. And I really want to thank you for bringing us the science.
Well, thank you. I mean, when I first started and was charged with starting the Florida's Total Maximum Daily Load Watershed Restoration Program, I went around the state doing many, many talks, explaining what goes on. And the one thing I promised, and unfortunately, now that I'm gone, it isn't going, but the one thing I promised is, we would base our decisions on good science. Because you're talking about decisions that are going to ultimately cost taxpayers billions of dollars. And so, good science should always drive good policy.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Livingston, Forbes Street? Stick around if you can, if you'd like, and we'll hear the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you very much, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
It's my pleasure. And Carl, at this particular point in time, we want to go ahead and give the presentation.
Can we take a break before the presentation, maybe?
Martha, the problem with taking a break, and if you'd like to take a break, that'd be okay, but we have a lot of people in here and we can create some pretty sizable chaos by taking a break.
Okay. Well, I think I will take a break.
Anyone who wishes to walk out for a minute, you're welcome to do so.
And the TV person might need a break. It's insane. You know what I mean?
I heard you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead, Carl.
Okay. Carl Schweng, City Manager. I want everybody to know that this is critically important to the city, and as city manager, I kind of approached this from the viewpoint of a layperson, of a resident of the city of Benita Springs, and one who lives on water. So, I wanted to really look to see what would be best for our city in the long run.
Would you like the lights down, sir?
But I am not, sure. But I am not an engineer, and I don't play one on TV, even on this TV, but I do care about water. So, first off, I want to make a corrective statement. I did indicate in the green sheet that the Baraco Report had been accepted by council on September the 18th. That was incorrect, and I apologize for that misinformation. Now, for the DRGR. For the record, it is about the environment. It is not about development. It's about water flow, water quality, and transportation as well. I think that sometimes the reasons we do things get lost in the middle of all the discussions and the parade of other consultants. Some have suggested that this city effort towards, is just towards development for development's sake. Actually, it is just the opposite. I recall while I asked council back on December 19th, 2012, so almost a year ago, to support another study. It was not about ways to develop more in the city, as some have suggested. My comments made on that date were that the environment was the reason. And as the studies show, some 71 percent of the DRGR study area is impaired and not functioning as it should or as people think it might. In fact, a Lee County representative told me recently that this area is the most impaired of the DRGR areas in the entire county. The goal is to improve and to restore what we can. And what I thought I'd do, and this is appropriate after listening to Mr. Livingston, and thank you for your comments, sir. We appreciate that, is to show you a little bit about what the DRGR actually looks like up there in the Northeast. And what you're going to see is an amazing lack of forests and trees and pristine environmental areas. What you're going to see are areas like this where you've got the land scraped, it's being used for agricultural purposes and other purposes being up there. And of course, you can see that it's also being used for tanker storage. Another situation where the land has been scraped and is being used for other than pristine opportunities for use, same thing here, same thing here, as well as some development there. And just running through real quickly, agricultural uses. And then, of course, an area that is actually in a preserve area, and this is more how, it's a lot closer to what a protected or preserve area should really look like. So, what I wanted to do is talk about this a little bit. And the issue is that we've got problems up in this area, and I don't think anyone denies that. And the city could make the required improvements, but we would never be able to afford it. And people have, again, somebody already said, we've got a lot, heard a lot of good ideas up here tonight, but funding is an issue. It's a challenge that we have, and one of the things we are trying to grapple with as we discuss this issue. So, if we can't afford the improvements that may be necessary in this area to do restoration, the question is, does it make sense to consider providing the private sector the opportunity to develop beyond one unit per 10 acres so we can meet the improvement goals with the private sector and future growth paying some of that bill? It has been suggested that we set aside the Baraco Report. But please remember that the Baraco Report is a compilation of the studies that have been completed before. To set aside his report sets aside not only his recommendations and conclusions, but all the reports that have gone before. This doesn't make particular sense, especially since these reports have been prepared by qualified, well-recognized individuals -- qualified, well-recognized individuals and specialties, with specialties in water management and land planners, at a cost of the city over the last 13 years in excess of $450,000. That's a lot of money to be where we are at today. I'm not going to go through this, but basically, this is a list of the consultants that have worked for the city. The ones with asterisks next to them are ones with water specialties. There may be others on the list, but I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to take a look at that. Now, these multiple experts have studied the DRGR conditions and opportunities and have recommended that we move forward with something. The question is, what is that and how far do we go? We have had some citizens suggest that we need to have more studies from independent consultants. This, of course, I think unfortunately, implies that the city's consultants, today and in the past, have somehow sacrificed their professional ethics and standards in order to reach a conclusion and/or that the city has directed a predetermined outcome in order to gain more development. A professional does not give up one standard just because of what the client wants. Further, the instructions were clear in the written scope of work provided by the city, and there were no instructions from the city contrary to this scope. So it is true that this particular report did not have a lot of detail about implementation. The scope of work did not call for that, and that is probably down the road, should we ever get there. But right now, the question is whether or not there's interest in even taking a look further at this. Now, the outcomes were not predetermined. However, the outcomes may sound familiar to those who have paid attention over the years, because the answers to the same questions have not changed. From consultant to consultant, they have not changed. And that in and of itself should provide some comfort to those who want more studies. The answers have not changed. Moratoriums have been mentioned. First, the staff would not be able to recommend this course of action, as the city attorney has appropriately opined in writing. Moratoriums on land use like this versus zoning are different. Second, it's not practical to make owners in the area with vested rights to have to wait to develop their property, should they want to. And they do have those property rights, at least to develop another 750 single-family residences. So let's talk a little bit about the recharge. The professional consensus is that the DRGR study area does not provide significant public water supply recharged. It provides some recharge, but relative to the total, it is relatively insignificant. The South Florida Water Management District personnel have confirmed that this is true, and BSU representatives have indicated that they have drinking water capacity. Let's talk about flooding. I know this is a serious concern to our residents. We have heard them. We've heard those concerns. But to place this in the proper perspective, the DRGR study area is approximately 4,900 acres, within a larger watershed of 310 square miles. And when you calculate that out, that's actually 198,000 acres of a watershed. So when you do the math, you take the 4,900, you divide it by the 198,000, we're talking about, of this entire watershed, we're talking about about 2.5% of the entire area is this DRGR study area. It's a very small piece of the watershed that impacts us. So what we are talking about, then, comes down to flowways. And here's a little map here that was kind of hand-drawn. We did check with the Water Management District, and they've indicated that these flowway lines are absolutely accurate. And what it shows is that, yes, the water comes in from the Northeast, as we've known for a long time. And before they hit the DRGR area, they kind of, in my language, hang a right, but they move to, they move water to the west in these flowways here, assuming they're all open and unimpeded, all right? And then the water, if it doesn't hang that right, if it doesn't turn towards the west, it comes down here to the east of the DRGR area. So the DRGR area does not have much flow going on in it right now, other than what you see right here, and then heading off to the west. What you also see is that the water coming down this flowway will then hang another right and head for the west, and of course, that's along the Imperial River. If it doesn't go into there and it's out here, then it will actually go around the communities to the east that are represented here, a lot of them tonight, in this area right here. Now, that does not mean that no water flows through those areas, but your major flowways are indicated on this map.
Carl, I'm going to end up for one second.
Sir?
I got handed a note. The buses are leaving, and they want to make sure that nobody is left behind.
Can I go?
The buses are leaving. Okay. There you go. So you'll have to hitch a ride back home if you miss your bus, anyway. Just like school. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, my point is, does it make sense to make the private sector work for the densities that help them, that help the city, and help our quality of life? And not just to give the private sector more density for density's sake? We need to see a public benefit. In partnership with the state, the county, the South Florida Water Management District, the city has made many stormwater system improvements since our incorporation back in 2000. While a system is only designed to handle so much water over a certain period of time, anything above that design standard is going to create some flooding issues. Most cities cannot afford to design the most devastating rain amount projections. The best the city can hope for is to design for the most likely events. But to talk about the 1999 flood is not as relevant anymore, even though I know that was a devastating flood.
Ninety-five.
It's not as relevant anymore because of the large number of improvement projects and maintenance programs to reduce surface water flooding programs over the, problems over the years. I submit, for example, that back in 1995, if we would have had the rains we had this summer, including 10 inches received in the month of September, we would have had a serious flooding issue. But because of the numerous improvements completed over the years, this year's rains created relatively minor issues as opposed to major ones. Now, the Baraco report will tell you, and Carl Baraco is here tonight, and he would repeat this if necessary, is that the flooding is not going to be measurably improved. But that has to do with the level of flooding. So flooding may get to prior levels of elevation in terms of death. Where the flooding is actually improved is the duration of that flooding. And so that if we are using best management practices in our development, if we are keeping our flowways maintained properly, that the water should flow better, and that the improvement in flooding is seen in the reduction of the duration of the flooding. Therefore, flooding conditions are improved, and if you take a look at Mismer and Raul, both geologists and recognized water management specialists, they've said that the use of best management practices in future developments will result in an increase of the quantity of water that is retained on-site. And Mr. Livingston talked about the importance of that. And this, too, will help the flooding and actually water quality. Now, it has been suggested to use the mines as a reservoir for storage. Now, while I can understand this proposal, it is not really practical, because the property is privately owned. Sure, the public sector could try to acquire it, but given the fact that the current owner has approximately $89 million in the property, who pays for that? And even though this may not work, there is already storage in the area of 65,000 acres, and that's through the Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem Watershed, or otherwise known as Crew. Now, let's talk a little bit about water quality and best management practices. We can increase the standards over those of the South Florida Water Management District, and I personally agree that that would absolutely have to be done. In fact, beyond the 10% that has been recommended. We would need a significant increase over those current criteria. But that may not be as difficult to reach as one may think, since changing the land uses from housing cows and horses and hosting agriculture to moving it to developed property would make an improvement in and of itself. Because the existing impaired DRGR land uses include little to no stormwater treatment facilities, much of the off-site and through-site nutrient loading runoff are not removed from surface water drainage prior to discharging off-site and into the Imperial River. And yes, we have an impaired waterway there, as Mr. Livingston indicated. Septic tanks and the addition of septic tanks makes things worse. So let me take, let me just give you an idea of what that may look like. So, these are the calculated loading rates for, now, I say I'm not an engineer, okay? So please understand, I'm taking a run at this. But in order to make me understand kind of what really happens here, what we did is, we took a look at the loading rates for the new stormwater rules that are out. And we took the sample current uses, which are mostly agricultural, pasture, citrus, row crops, general. And then you take the rates, which are measured by milligrams per liter, by the way, these are what these rates are. And if you take a look at the column under N over on the agricultural side, you see those rates are running from, in a range from 2.24 all the way up to 3.47. Now, if you were to average that, that comes in around, you know, all those comes in around 2.7, 2.8. When you move over to the sample potential uses of low-density residential, single-family, multifamily, low-intensity commercial, and even light industrial, you will see that the nutrient generation on these is significantly lower. And those range from 1.18 all the way up to 2.3. So, when you take a look at that, just the change in the land use itself could actually bring an improvement to the water quality. And it's the same, to a little bit lesser extent, but it's the same situation on the phosphorus side as well. Now, let's talk a little bit about transportation. Many issues are coming with transportation. They're already here for some of us. And this is regardless of the council's decision tonight or in the future. Our challenges with transportation out in the DRGR area are coming. The 2035 traffic projections reflect the build-out of all the entitled land uses, including the DRGR lands contained within and around the study area. Given just what has already been projected, the 2035 long-range transportation program shows a need for widening Benita Grand Boulevard or Drive and East Terry Street without any change in the DRGR density. How does one pay for these coming costs? And it was also talked about sprawl, and we don't want sprawl. Well, I'm here to tell you that we already have sprawl out in the DRGR, because the definition of sprawl is really where you have development that is so spread out that you can't provide sufficient public infrastructure to serve them efficiently or effectively. And that's why you're likely, for the additional 750 houses that could go in there by right today, you're not going to have BSU running lines to them. They're going to be putting in wells, and they're going to be putting in septics. So to try to get a handle on what all this means to the layperson, we put together the next slide, which is our DRGR summary. And just briefly going through it, the current situation is, yes, the land's impaired, but we could significantly improve this impairment by allowing some amount of additional development up there. And I'm not here tonight to tell you how much that is. Question is flooding. Yes, we have flooding. But again, as I indicated, that would be improved, and the duration would be reduced, again, using best management practices and modern management systems, flooding systems and water management systems in the new developments. Water quality, yes. It's impaired, it's poor, and yes, using best management practices, that water quality could improve. Septic systems, it's a poor situation, and without something being done, you're going to get probably a minimum of 750 more out there. And that is not taking us in the direction of environmental sustainability and responsibility. So yes, if additional development was proposed, it was planned, it was regulated, it was clustered, you'd be looking at enough of a clustering of this development and activity that BSU could actually run lines, and therefore, you move those to the BSU centralized system and away from those septic systems. And that's for current developments, if possible, and certainly for new developments. And then you take development itself. We've talked about it a little bit already. Right now, it's unplanned and it's unregulated. People could build these homes starting tomorrow, and they'd have to get themselves a building permit, and off they'd go. But they'd be putting in wells and septics, because again, with a density of one unit per 10 acres, they're spread out enough, it's going to be difficult for BSU to run those lines. So yes, the proposed would provide, we believe, smart, planned, and regulated development using best management practices and significantly increased standards. Let's talk about recharge. Yes, the recharge is poor. However, we also believe the recharge could be improved by increasing the retentions in new developments, and that would be done in the lake systems. Transportation, I've talked about that as well. Improvements are going to be required if nothing is done. So the question is, how do we pay for that? The suggestion is, capital expenditures will be required, but we could actually improve the transportation system, should the developments be allowed. And then last is funding, and I've talked about that. Funding right now is not available for significant improvements in the DRGR. We have a lot of things going on. We are very fiscally prudent. This council and all the councils beforehand have done, have ensured that. But funding would not be available under our current system. However, under a proposed, we would again allow the private sector and for the future growth to be handling that. So what do we do? Honestly, the easy answer is to do nothing. Leave it the way it is. It would save the city a lot of time and money spent on consultants. We would not require any more council time on this, and heaven knows, we have other things to work on right now. And it might even calm the concerns of many of the people represented here tonight. Unfortunately, this topic is not that simple, and therefore, not that easy. So there is a no-change option. Unfortunately, I do not believe this option is viable. And why is that? Because I believe we have a responsibility to make things better, not simply allow them to get worse. Even with just more wells and septic tanks, capital improvements will still be needed, but who pays? Not only that, developments already approved in and around the DRGR will place demands on the area. But who pays? These make the area worse, not better. With some unplanned development already allowed by right, you are looking at more septic systems that are not conducive to increased water quality. In fact, Mr. Kopp on October 16th said there isn't a septic system that works right in South Florida. I thought that was interesting. So either change was going to be forced on us, or we can take the lead. I think our residents expect us to be anticipating issues and trying to address them before they become unmanageable. That is the choice we have before us today. So I would encourage us to take a holistic approach to this, not piecemeal. Let's consider creating new livable smart places, because without a plan, we can't get an overall answer. We simply are destined to just react to the proposals that come in. And by the way, they are coming in. Owners are already on our doorstep. So let me show you the recommendations. And actually, if you think about this, other than the moratorium issue, this staff recommendation is not actually that much different than some of the things we've heard this evening. So what is staff looking for? Well, first off, we're looking for direction to pursue a future land use map change, allowing for additional density. Okay? We are not asking for a land use change tonight. You couldn't do it even if you wanted to, all right? This is not a zoning issue. This is a land use issue. We're just looking for that direction. This will take some number of months. We are not going to be at the next council meeting with all the answers. We are not going to be at the next council meeting with all the answers. Just more questions, probably. Second, that we would use all the data available to us to study the options. That would include the Baraco report, but it would also include all the other studies out there that would help us get to an answer that is the right fit for the city of Benita Springs in the DRGR area. And last, to use a stakeholder group, however the council chooses to create that as we proceed. I want to make clear that all proposals would still need to come back to the city council at a later date, and probably additional dates. And I might even recommend that if we allowed, if we were allowed to go to this next step, that we would actually bring it back to you first before we would even start the formal process, the legal process, of changing the land use, should we go in that direction. Mayor and council, I appreciate your attention tonight. I once again thank, the mayor's already done this, I want to thank the attendees for how civilly they conducted themselves tonight. Makes me even more proud to be your city manager. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Everyone, I think we're probably heard enough for just right now. Can we go ahead and take a 15-minute break?
Good idea.
And then we'll all come back and we can...
Oh.
This might take some time.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Okay, I'm game. I can do this all night. Mayor, could you put the lights up, please?
Mayor.
Oh, there you go. Yes?
I'd just like to beg the members of the audience, really, we have a lot of discussion going on. I mean, this is, this could take like an hour, two hours still.
Oh, they, they, they want to do this. Unless council wants to overrule me, we're going to go ahead and keep on moving.
Well, you know, getting up and walking around is good for your brains, so I'm just feeling...
They want to go on with it.
Okay.
Okay, we are going on with it. Okay, right now, council, do you have any questions from Carl about what he's presented to you at this time? Any questions, any comments, any concerns about what Carl has produced?
I have concerns.
Then now's your time.
Yeah, I have concerns because our comp plan has made several recommendations, and I keep wondering, why is this thing coming up, Carl? I mean, you know, ever since I've been on council, it's like coming up and coming up, and we go through this exercise. Why is that?
But were you here at the meeting where we told him to do this?
I understand that.
Well, that's why he's...
Excuse me, mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm answering a question, because you're putting him on the spot, asking why he's doing it.
That was rhetorical, sir.
You told him to do it.
No, no, that was a rhetorical question, okay? I'm not putting anything on Carl.
Okay, good.
Okay, it's because our comp plan has this policy, 1.7.1, which says, way back when, in the beginning of dawn, in 2000, when we became a city, we shall have complete a study by 2004, okay? So yes, we should have done this by 2004. And it would conclude what would be appropriate land uses in this area, okay? And then we would make a decision, wetlands, habitats, all this kind of stuff. We haven't really fulfilled what the charge is with the comp plan amendment with this study, Carl, and I don't know how staff can recommend, because it's asking for drainage, stormwater patterns, all these things the comp plan asked for. This plan did not deliver, and I also have to say that it has misrepresented some things, which, if you like, I can get into, maybe not right now, but as far as, you know, staff putting this forward, I feel very uncomfortable as the administrator pushing this policy. We're the policymakers, and we appreciate the technical information being given to us, but I really feel very uncomfortable with that. And several of the members in this audience said, "I've never seen this before here." And we have staff recommendations, but to this level with this kind of contentious issue, really has some people disturbed by that, and me too. And you're a man of integrity, I have no doubt about that, I'm not saying you're not, because I'll stand up for you on that, but I'm just concerned about the level of cheerleading on this plan, when I think this plan is not adequately addressed some very serious issues and also has misrepresented some issues. And I will list those, if you like, based on science.
Well, I'm going to come to Carl's...
At another time.
I'm going to come to Carl's defense here, because he told you that you have an option to do nothing, and he's okay with that. As the city manager, he is responsible. That man there is responsible for the fiscal condition of this community. That's why he feels ethically and morally obligated to opine on this. You think he wants to get up here and put it on the line here? No, he would, most city managers or other city managers, maybe they just sit there and let you do what you want to do. He felt ethically and morally inclined, he felt like he had an obligation to tell you, "Look, we don't have the money to do these things, we see there's opportunities to do that from the, from the information that I've been given and from my experiences as a city manager and as a planner." Am I right, Carl, as a planner? This is how you may want to get to this, or you may not want to do that. So regardless of whether you think he should have, he did, so now it's time for us to talk about what council wants to do.
Yes, sir, and that I very much appreciate, because I think what, some of the things that, the assumptions and the things that were said, that we can't afford this, we don't even, haven't even had a strategy or quantified what the projects would be. I know we have had a stormwater management, water quality update and a water quantity update in the city, but that didn't take into consideration some future plans, potential future plans in this area, and so we never got a quantification of that in this report. Also, this report, in the very beginning of the executive summary, in the second sentence says, "As documented by previous studies, the area does not contribute to the city's potable water and does not contribute," for the lower, mid Hawthorne, "and does not contribute significantly to the lower Tammy Amiographer." I'll tell you, four studies, which I have at hand, say groundwater recharge, Delisi, who was saying we should have 5,000 units out there. Groundwater recharge is occurring in the study area despite the presence of the Benita Springs Marl. The Greg Rall report, although the Benita Springs Marl is present at varying thickness across the study area, it leakens through the Marl significance. The Montgomery report, a gazillion years ago, the critical recharge area for the lower Tammy Aquifer includes the Benita Springs wellfield. Again, Montgomery report, the Aquifer recharge is quickly due to leakage through a thin and transmittive confining bed. And then, again, in the Rall report, it says, "And it happens along Wellfield Road and Citrus Park, and it's significant, we have no wellfield protection overlay except the 1995 Lee County," we've never put that into place, our comp, or updated, I'm sorry. Lee County is updated, theirs in 2007. I mean, there are things that we could have been doing along the way we haven't done. I personally will take the position of Marjorie Stone and Douglas, who we've all recognized as a great Floridian. The more we encroach, every little piece, every little piece you encroach more and more into the Everglades, you're going to be the death of ourselves, because we will outdo ourselves on water supply as much as we say today that there is plenty of water. Each, next time, next we'll be considering whether crew is valid, and we'll start building in the crew land. Each time we move forward, again, our comp plan amendment says in another policy, we should be, the city should discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl, 1.4.1, by maintaining or increasing densities consistent with flood hazard considerations between Old US 41 and I-75 to encourage infill and development. It's saying west of 75 is where the development should happen. Other planning studies have said you should have a rural fringe as a buffer between your preserve area, the 60,000 acres of crew, and the infill urban area. Rural fringe has a real benefit, people, and while it has septic tanks, I have a cure for those new 750 septic tanks. Eliminate septic tank permits. They've done it in Palm Beach County, they said no more. And then start getting a plan to get those people online. We subsidize $18 million on Old 41 to widen the road. Why can't we subsidize $18 million for getting the water right in the east Benita Springs DRGR? And I, you know, I have so much more I could say. I don't like being called cowardly, because that ain't me, but 97%, you said, 97.5% of a watershed drains into 2.5%. That's the problem. 97% is coming down to this little two, well, you said 2.5%. This is just 2.5% of the watershed area. Yes, that's what you said, but you know, it's coming at it. All that water is coming at it. Some of it diverts a little bit to the, to the east, but all that from Lake Trafford on is coming down towards us, and I think, you know, people have a right concern, because we also, it was not mentioned, we had a flood in 2009. And I don't know, all these proponents are talking about development. I didn't see you at the Astero Rec Center taking care of people who were flooded out of their homes. I was chasing down the Mexican consulate to get money over here to feed them, okay? If you want to see people run out of their homes, I had somebody tell me, "Oh, well, the people on Quinn Street, you know, we'll just let them get flooded again and buy them out, because they'll have repetitive mitigation." That's the wrong way to treat your citizens. And that was a staff member, excuse me, who said that to me, and I thought, wrong, I'm not mentioning names. Spring, again, our comp plan amendment says that we should have a spring overlay just around the same place. We don't have that in place. We don't have a river overlay in place. We don't have all these BNP's, and we talk about great BNP's. We don't, our BNP's in our comp plan amendment says that at least it should come to the standard so it does no harm. But that's not enough, because we know that the outstanding Florida waterway, that the Imperial River and Oak Creek are, require 29% reduction in TMDLs, those, that nitrogen and phosphorus, okay? Quit using fertilizer, people, all right? And as far as, you know, the horses and the cows, we should have an ordinance also saying you ought to pick up your horses and cow manure and compost it or do something proper with it, instead of, I've seen it out in the soil, okay? There are so many things that we need to do before we move forward to this, and I don't even believe in moving forward to this. Build houses on stilts out there, you know, let the water flow underneath, they won't get flooded. I believe, my husband is a painting contractor, so we like houses, because we got to paint them, but for Benita Springs to go this way, when is enough enough? When are we going to ruin our lifestyle in Benita Springs and say, "This wonderful river basin that we live in, well, you know, I like the Chicago River," and it's just going to kept getting built up and built up? Eventually, you know, people won't want to live here. And I love it with a lush, tropical, beautiful way it is, where you can get tarp and snook out of the river. It's an impaired waterway, we need to do better. I fought for these waters for the whole time I've been on council, and guess what? I'm not going to stop when I get off, sorry, people. We want to be a world-class destination. Sanibel is a world-class destination. What have they done? They said no more. No condos on the beach, no more density in the, in the area. We built, we bought up conservation land, we saved our river, they have Sanibel River, they have a river on island. Who knew you could do that? But they have put into place very strict, very strict ordinances, because they said, "This is the kind of quality community we want, building, 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 isn't it?" And Mr. Flood said to me, "You know, we have rules in place, but you know what? They're not going to get you what you need. When you, when you apply for a permit, we have to follow the rules we have." It's going to take them three to five years to get permit, get the rules changed. What's the rush? You know, we've been dealing with this for a long time, but really, I don't think we should do it at all. I think we should put into place these things that saved Benita Springs. And, you know, I'm glad we went through this study, because it showed, I learned a lot more, and you know, I think we all read this, and Mr. Longheart brought in a wheelbarrow full of studies we've had. We've had a lot of studies. But the one thing we really haven't studied, because it's proprietary informations, I think with BSU, is what's happening to our Aquifer and what's going, they won't turn it over. What's hap, and I hope they do now. Turn me over the stuff, Fred. What is happening to our Aquifer and what can we do to alleviate that 2009 study and save that beautiful Benita Trail, that column, as, you know, so aptly defended? So that's, I got more for later, I'll just leave that for now.
That's all right.
Okay, any other council person want to opine in? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I think anybody that sits on the second floor knows that Carl and I've had our disagreements periodically, and part of it is on this, but I will tell you, did exactly what we asked him to do, and probably as well as I would have expected and maybe better, because we asked him to give a staff, the staff give a position. He's done that. Doesn't mean that we're not educated enough to make a decision our own, that's their decision. What we make out of this is what we're going to make out of this. And frankly, Councilman Simons, at least two of these are ones that you're proposing right now. So I'm not sure exactly why we're criticizing the staff, because they've done what we asked them to do. So now it's time for us to make a decision.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Anybody else?
I'd like to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Carl, you've known for a long time that, since you came on board, been very gratified to see your, how you've handled things in the two years that you've been here, and I would like to continue to work with you. My problem, not a problem, but it's, it's a matter that I live in District 6, and I've lived here for 20 years, so I have some workable knowledge of the water, and the suggestions that have been made by numerous people have been reasonable and should be expected to be followed up with for the task force and so forth. And the moratorium is not out of the question, because the fact is that, in my opinion, as a councilman, I don't like to be rushed into a decision, since I come from an industry that we had to explain very thoroughly about what we're presenting and making sure that the people that are sitting, my clients, understood exactly what was going to happen with their money. So, and I have an email here that you provided to me as part of the public record, and it talked about the mine area and how, how they would like to develop X number of lots and how they've reduced it twice, but they were waiting for this to come about, so, before they make any decision. And 7,000 houses times point, 2.28, which is the average household in Benita Springs, comes, I think, to around 16,000 people. And what has not been discussed has been the development that's going inside of Benita right now, and I'd like to talk a couple minutes, Ben, please, give me a couple minutes.
Go right ahead, you, you, keep going.
I'd like to share with the audience the development on Benita Beach Road, which is composed of five gated communities right now, and there are three more proposed further east, which will encompass about 2,800 units. It's zoned to be done, because previous councils supported that some years ago, so that's 2,800 new, and if you add the five developments together that are already built, we're going to have over 7,000 residential houses will be there. So if you add those plus the DRGR suggestion, that's 14,000 or 15,000 houses. Now, if you put 1.5 cars to that, that's how many residential or automobiles we'll have. In addition to that, the areas around the I-75 interchange has four quadrants. Every one of those, before the recession, was approved for development, large commercial developments, every corner. That hasn't happened yet, so we have to face that sometime down the road. Next thing, on Benita Beach Road, at the corner of Benita Grande and Benita Beach Road, there's a 68-acre commercial property that was supposed to be a big box store. That hasn't happened yet either, but it's zoned commercial. So when you take all that into consideration, which, what's on the table right now, to make a move to do what some people would like us to do, I think it's premature, I think it's too quick, and I don't know all the financial numbers, other than the fact, I do know that to do Terry Street and Benita Grande is $110 million, and that is in the Baraco report, $110 million. So I would like to suggest that we go not down the road speeding to come to these conclusions, and I know the pressure's on, I don't care what, I've been around the block a few times, and I know when pressure is applied, and I've seen the pressure applied, and I don't necessarily like that, because we are here to represent everybody that lives in the city of Benita Springs. Maybe you wouldn't be impacted by it, because you live, and so many people, but all the people on the east side are going to be impacted dramatically. And if we don't take care of the water quality, we're going to be mandated with tremendous costs, from what Mr. Livingston said, that we have to, going to have to do something about all those things. And so what's the rush? Why do we have to start moving on something that could happen in the future years? And it's, and about the 750 septic systems, well, what happened, what do you, how much do you think, the 7,500 homes compared to 700, you know, it's just, it's a mute point. I don't, I don't see any, that's irrelevant to me, you know, 752. So... point. I don't see any, that's irrelevant to me, you know, 752. So, the people came out tonight to express their opinions, and I respect every one of you, regardless of where you stand. But I live in Benita Springs, and I want to look out for my community as a whole, not as a district, but as a whole. What is the best thing? And by the way, how about another 25,000 cars on Hickory Boulevard to go for a swim? What's going to happen to that? Another 25,000. So, I would just suggest that we go slowly and get the water right. That's important. Mr. Livingston came down from Tallahassee. I thank you for your presentation. It was informative, factual, and they're the kind of people that we should be listening to, the people that have the kind of knowledge that he has related to the water structures. And I respect that, and I would hope that we would follow his direction so that the staff can work with people like that who obviously know what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Stephen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Carl, I agree with what the mayor and Stephen has to say about, you did what we asked you to do. However, I'd just like to say that, Mr. Forbes, I want to thank you for your presentation. I thought it was fair and balanced. And a lot of questions popped out in my mind, and I'm just saying, I'm a little bit more confused now than I ever have been. And after the gentleman gave his presentation, it's even more confusing. And when it becomes that confusing, it's hard to make an informed decision. But I want to just say to you, Mr. Forbes, and everybody who wore the white tonight, that you were here not seeking a cowardly approach, but seeking a concerned approach. And the issues that you were looking at were the issues that other people are concerned about. And you're not against, necessarily against, the development, but you have questions about flooding. Let's get the water right and the will of the people. So, I have to support the people out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
All righty. Seeing that I've been called Mother Earth sometimes and Tree Hugger and all of those things associated with conservation and the environment and all that, I struggle with this and have struggled with this. But what makes me come to a conclusion is that I have driven the roads that we're talking about. I've been up and down the streets of the study area, and there are dumped refrigerators, tires, rotting, rusting truck bodies. It's been fertilized, pesticidesed, and overplowed, overditched, and everything that you could name of. It's not working as it is. It'll never, ever work if we leave it alone and let it continue to go like that. And it's also not going to work if it's one home for every 10 acres. That's just not going to be the answer either. So, doing nothing is not the answer. I'm not convinced that we can go down that path. I've been emailed, phone called, and it's funny how when you ask people, "Have you ever been down the study area?" Most people haven't. They have no idea. They have that vision that it's this pristine, beautiful area. That pristine, beautiful area is in conservation land. It's already 2020 land or it's in crew preservation for impotuity, and that's a good thing. Can Mother Nature rebuild herself? Yes, absolutely. I'd like to find a way for some of that to happen, too. But I think that going forward, we can have a unified plan. There has to be a plan. It just can't be hodgepodge and everybody doing whatever they want. So, the plan can address all aspects of the water management, the conservation, and development to move forward. And I feel that we've got choices on how we can get there, and we're not having to decide that all tonight. But we need to go forward, and I think we have an opportunity as a city at this point to create some extreme standards in setting quite the role model for other cities and other places that have the same problems and same things that they're going to be facing with water quality. I think that's going to be the sign of the future, water. So, we can put in all our sustainability criteria. We can set new stricter, higher standards for reducing pollutants and nitrogen levels in our waterways. And I want to be the person that sits up here and puts my big girl panties on and says, "That's what we need to do. We need to step up and do it and, you know, not push it off again." It's been pushed off, and I think this council actually, at this point, we have more information, obviously, than any of the previous councils that have bunted it down the path. And I think it's time to step up and say, "Let's make a plan." We might not get that plan done in six months. We might not get it done in a year to where we're all satisfied that this is the right way to go. But just saying, "Do nothing" or "Slow down" doesn't accomplish it, and we need to do something. So, I'm there. I'm ready for something to happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to dive in here a little bit here, too. I listened to what Brad Cornell had to say. I listened to what Mr. Livingston had to say. Excellent, excellent. I heard what the Conservancy had to say. I heard what Carl had to say. I didn't hear anything that was contradictory there.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know about the rest of you. I didn't hear any contradiction there. They're all saying, "The water's impaired out there. The water can be improved, and it can be improved dramatically if you make the rules and regulations right." I think there are some incredibly creative things there. Like Janet said, there are some things that we can do out there to where cities around the world, cities all over Florida can point at, "Look, that's the way you do it. That's the way you do it, right there." What Benita Springs did, they took care of the environment. They restored the place, and they didn't come out of pocket to do it. They did it. But you have to do it in a holistic way. I don't think you can look at any one part of this. I think that if we decide that we're going to be a forward-thinking community, if we decide that we really care about the environment, if we decide that we really want to fix the flooding problems in the future that may arise out there, if we decide that we want to do these things, you're going to have to look at all of these things at the same time. You're going to have to make a commitment. Okay, the people, the people. We're all going to have to make a commitment to do this and to do it right, hold our own feet to the fire. But you can't do it by just kind of shrugging it off. You can't do it by saying, "Oh, well, let's just do one section at a time," or what. It has to be holistically because if you put in place restrictions on the things that won't work or aren't workable, it can't happen. So, I think we got to go forward in our lives. We have to go forward in our community, and we have to go forward on benefit, for the benefit of the environment. You have to do that. What's the hurry? Those standards that Mr. Livingston are talking about, they're on their way. They're here. We're going to have to adhere to them. That's the hurry. And so far as that we've been in a big rush so far, of course, we haven't been in a big rush. We have been working on this for 14 years, and we haven't been able to pull the trigger one way or the other. It's not like we've made a decision at one time or another. We've decided not to decide. We've decided not to decide. We've decided not to decide time and time again. Now, all of you who are afraid of flooding, you have every right to be afraid of flooding. Flooding occurs out there. It does. It does occur out there. But, I mean, we have the talent and the know-how right in front of us that are willing to help us do this. And so far as saying that, "No, we don't need any more houses in here," I could have said that 45 years ago, and about 40,000 people wouldn't be here right now. That's the truth. Worthington wouldn't be here. Hunter's Ridge wouldn't be here. None of you would be here. It wouldn't be here. If that's what no gets you, no gets you. I'm proud that you're here. I'm proud to call you my neighbor, and I'm proud of the places that you've built to live. I have no regret over that, and no regret that you're all here. You've brought wonderful things to the community. And the thought that if Benita Springs, if we only just say no to everything, every other community in southwest Florida is going to stop, too? Nope. Not going to happen. Astero, I just attended, I've been going to their meetings. They can't wait to build more houses to go to whose beach?
Hours.
Whose beach are they going to go to? Benita Beach. While we sit here and go, "Oh, well, we did our part by not doing anything and allowing the water to stay degraded." So, that's where I'm coming from right there. And you know what? I have to tell everybody here, when we first started, I'm going to remind you, when we first started into this, I begged you, I begged all of you, "I don't want any part of this. I am content not to do anything and to leave it alone. But please, don't go down this road again if we're going to look at the information and go, 'Oh, well, that's obviously tainted because I don't agree with it.'"
No.
That's not good science. If there's a problem with it, if there's parts of it that are flawed or we want to be better, I think Mr. Livingston, it's awesome that he's pointed out, "You know what? They've pointed that out, but that's not good enough." I agree with him. It's not good enough. We need to do better than that. But that doesn't mean you don't do anything. So, that's my part of it, and people cannot like it and disagree with it and be afraid of it, but it doesn't make it not true. It doesn't make it not true. So, that's it. Pete, your turn.
Yeah. Well, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but I think if you look at the next agenda item, that's where I, that's how I approach this. You know, you hear a lot of opinions here. We've done a lot of work. There's been a lot of research. There's a lot of happy people. Actually, no, I don't think anybody's happy, actually. Are they? But so what, you know, it's up to us to make a decision. There's not going to be, not everybody is going to be happy. That is why I have proposed this one-year moratorium. Because guess what that does, depending on, it doesn't matter what side of this issue you're on. It sets a deadline for a decision. It's not going to punt it down the road for 14 more years, and we're going to resolve the issues. We're going to work through the issues, and it's going to be time certain. So that's how I come about this, and, you know, I see people shaking their heads. I see people smiling in the crowd. I see it all, okay? I understand that. But it is up to us to make a decision. I think we need boards. We need to appoint people that know what they're talking about. And guess what? It's not going to happen, in my mind, this evening, but it is going to happen within a year. That land has been there an awful long time. We need to get it right. We need to get the water right, and we need to make a decision. But I think we need more time to get there. So that's where I come about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so here we are.
Make a motion?
Add a cigarette?
Listen, I would propose to hit this, and this is just to get the ball rolling so we can start talking about and start, keep going around in circles here. I believe as though that, one thing about the moratorium, you really can't do anything out there. I think there's a de facto moratorium out there right now. I think that's why we're here. I mean, because you really can't do anything of consequence. And if someone, even if someone comes in with a comprehensive plan amendment, they can do that all day long. You don't have to approve it. You can create your own de facto moratorium by saying, "No, no, no." But Audrey, you want to opine on that a little bit?
Yes, thank you. Counsel, you have the backup. And the memorandum, I'll probably talk more about the memorandum than I will actually the green sheet, but we can do both. First of all, I have the actual comprehensive plan policies in there. So what is existing allowed to be permitted out there at this moment is conservation uses. I don't think anybody's objecting to somebody putting a conservation area out there. Agriculture, residential uses at one dwelling unit per 10 acres, public schools, and other public uses, essential services, and nonprofit recreational uses. So that's the existing what people can put out there right now. Now, I prepared the memorandum. I tried to explain. I also was able to review what Mrs. Stone provided me, which was great because what she provided me is consistent with what I have tried to explain, which is the fact that you only use a moratorium when people have a comp plan that allows development, and you're trying to say, "Wait, we don't want that development to occur right now," because this is a comprehensive plan issue. And comprehensive plan, and so the moratorium she provided me are zoning issues, and zoning is different than comprehensive planning. And the best case that I talk about, and I wish I could imitate Yogi Berra, because...
Oh, I'm still glad you can't.
Yeah.
Oh, I bet you could. Come on, give it to her.
Go ahead.
I can't, but I've tried to say, "It ain't over till it's over," which I think is a Yogi Berrism, because there's a case called Pacheta versus Ponce Inlet. And in the city of Ponce Inlet, you had developers who had a very friendly city council. The city council wanted to have this development. What happened is they had elections, and that city council was removed. And then you had a different city council. The developers said, "Wait a second. We had all these development plans, all these great aspirations." And there was a high judgment at a period of time. A judge gave a judgment of about $70 million. So it's scary in government. We follow those type of cases. And then what happened afterwards is through all the appeal processes, they said, "Look, this is comprehensive planning." And in comprehensive planning, nobody has a right, if it's a legislative decision, to rely on maybe promises until that legislative decision occurs. So you don't have the need for a moratorium that you would if you had a zoning case. The second problem about trying to put a moratorium out there is if you put a moratorium, you do have people who live out there existing. Now, Mrs. Poloniza came up today and explained, you know, she has her horses out there. She has, now, what if she needed to do something that needed a permit, maybe a driveway permit? Are we going to have a moratorium to deny her to have her driveway? I mean, we could. You can tell me to do that. I mean, but is that what council's intent? And my guess is that's not council's intent, to make sure people can't get the roofs, can't get a mobile home relocation in Citrus Park, can't get, you know, a driveway permit. My guess is what you're trying to do is make sure development doesn't occur. But at this point, development doesn't have a right to occur unless it's one dwelling unit per 10 acres. So there's, I mean, we could do a moratorium for single-family residences that meet the minimum use determination or 10 acres, but I don't think that's where council is, because we do have a minimum use determination permission in the comprehensive plan. But my guess is that's not what council is trying to stop at this time. So I have a memorandum explaining why a moratorium is not needed. The information Mrs. Stone gave was great, but if that applies to zoning applications, so it does not apply to comp plan decisions. And in the green sheet, you'll see there is a backup of that. And then the final issue I want to say, and only one citizen brought it up, so I'll go very briefly. Florida statutes prohibit referendum on the subject of comprehensive planning. So this is not something that you can do either. One citizen brought it up, so I don't think it's a big issue. I think you guys all know that, but I just want to make clear, it's not the will of the people who are coming to vote on something. Of course, they get to vote on who their council members are, and you guys need to represent them. I'm not trying to say that's not the case. But it's not something where, that you can vote on a specific to prohibit things in a certain area.
Carl, can I ask you to bring up your slide with your staff recommendations on it, because I want to point out something there. Sorry.
No problem.
All right, go back.
May I ask Audrey a question while he's looking for that, Ben?
Yeah, go ahead.
Audrey, so you're saying it's not required, but it's not needed. But is it allowed?
Is it an option?
Yes, you could do a moratorium, but you're doing a legislative act on a legislative act.
Okay.
So, and...
So, we're forbidding ourselves from allowing due process?
It depends on what you put in that moratorium. And I would need a lot of direction. You know, don't make a blanket statement that you want a moratorium as a feel-good, but then you're going to be processing things, you know, and then you're just...
And I don't think, people who have vested rights, the rights that they have vested out there, Torrey wants to put on a driveway or, you know, whatever, that's a different...
Not if I have a moratorium that says, "Nobody's allowed to get any permits."
That's permits. We're not talking about permits. We're talking about comp plan amendments that would increase density until we get the water study done and the standards in place and the rules in place. Is 7,300 the right number? Why is 7,300 the right number? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
So, let's do that.
One more time.
Councilmember Simons, it is a legislative decision. So, it's not like a zoning case. You've seen me being scared in zoning cases where substantial competent evidence, and if we didn't have something, refusing the substantial competent evidence, you know, your decision could be overturned because you need substantial competent evidence in a zoning case. Comprehensive planning, Supreme Court is easy on this one. It's a no-brainer. I think every attorney will agree on this, maybe not citizens, but, you know, certainly attorneys. It is a legislative decision. That means your decision has to be upheld. So if you think that water quality plans need to be done, they need to be done. That's, as long as reasonable people can disagree as to the outcome, a judge has no jurisdiction to overturn. So they can't go to a court and say, you know, "Please, you know, overturn their being unreasonable because they want what reasonable people can agree to."
So if the mine comes in and they want a comprehensive plan amendment, we say, "Yeah, go ahead and make an application," and they come in, go through all the business, we go, "No, it's not consistent with our comprehensive plan or our city's vision. Out you go."
Right. And that's correct. At this time, I mean, they can ask for it. At this ti... I mean, they can ask for it. You can process it, you know, without the moratorium, but you are not obligated as long as you have a scintilla of evidence.
Okay. Okay, now, Tori... Sorry to use you, Tori, if you're still back out here, young lady. I don't believe... I don't... You don't live in the study area, because she's in...
She's...
She's in 29. Okay, she's not in the study area. So, we have a limited number of people in the study area. Okay.
I beg your pardon? Citrus Park?
Well, Citrus Park told us that they don't want to do anything, like hook up to BSU. So, that, for me, that is one of the biggest problems I see. And because that turned my mind. You know that? Because if I was considering Stoneburner coming online, because we could get Citrus Park off that package plant, and when they told... Brian came here and said, "No, we're not interested in that," I was like, "Well, then what the heck is the... You know, why? Okay? Why bother? I don't think it should be developed over there at the BSU property, because it's right in the middle of the well field. We're talking about well field protection. We don't have anything in, you know, updated. And then the mine just... Yeah, anyhow. Okay, so, can we say... I don't know if we can be specific to those properties, because that might be a legal quandary. I'm not sure, to say, "No comp plan amendments on those three properties for a year."
So, you would process any zoning that's permissible, but you would not process any comprehensive planning?
Well, you need to have a comp plan change in order to do zoning on those three properties.
Why don't we just cut to the chase here? Counsel, if the majority of counsel doesn't want to do anything on this, let's just go ahead and just say that. And forego the moratorium talk. I mean, let's... I mean, that's just... I think that's kind of a red herring. I mean, why do a moratorium? If this... Wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
If this cumulative council isn't inclined to do anything, well, then just say it. But I'm going to propose something a little different, just in case you are inclined to do that. I think what he's... What Carl has up here is good, but I think it has to be done simultaneously. I think that the very first thing you need to do is you need to form not a... Well, I don't know, stakeholder group. I think you need a team of professionals. I need... You need a team of people like Mr. Livingston, Mr. Cornell. You need the conservancy involved. We need all those... All those types within that... The people who know the areas, who know it, the people that people have faith in. They have... They know that they have the environment in mind. They know they mean you no harm. We need to have them as part of this process to help us get to where we need to be. But it needs to be done simultaneously. And we should set goals. The goals needs to be, number one, the water's got to get cleaner. Whatever we do, the water's got to be cleaner, and it's got to be way cleaner. We've got to set high standards, way high standards to what... At the end of the day there, whatever you do out there, it's got to be 25%. It's got to meet that goal, just like Mr. Livingston says. It needs to meet that. It needs to prove that the area, the study or the study, the plan we have, it has to show without doubt, so that people can have no fear of flooding. It has to show that it substantially allows the water to be retained, and through infiltration systems and all those techniques that Mr. Livingston showed, it's all maintained, infiltrates. But then it has a way to get out, but without any fear of flooding to the south. We need to have that as one of the... Not a goal, but that has to be proven as part of that. And then at the end of that, and in part of that, in duality with that, it needs to say, "Well, in order to pay for that, here's what you do. You allow the people to build that infrastructure, and you allow them to put rooftops or clean industrial, whatever it takes, whatever is the best option to do that is the least harmful way." That's what I would propose to do, a holistic way to look at that, to where everybody wins in this. Everybody wins in this, and it doesn't come out of your pocket.
Ben?
Either that or don't do anything.
May I ask Audrey to answer my question?
I'm going to go to... Peter next, then I'll come right back to you.
Audrey was... I asked her a question.
I'll get right back to you, okay? I'm sorry. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, no, I mean... No, no, absolutely. Thank you, and I appreciate those comments and everybody's comments here this evening. I am not one that does not want to do anything, but I am one that strongly believes we're not ready to make a decision. So, that's why I've offered this one-year moratorium, and I'm going to propose, and I'm going to make a motion right now that we craft a one-year moratorium with a time certain date to get this issue right. So, I'm going to make that motion right now.
Is a clarification? Is the moratorium... The mor... Is there a moratorium on comprehensive plan amendments in the DRGR in Benita Springs? Is that your motion?
Yes.
What about zoning, building permits that can continue through whatever people have a right to?
Correct.
If it's just comprehensive plan amendments?
Yeah.
That's it? That's your motion?
Okay, and another question, and that is, there is an existing comprehensive plan amendment that was submitted in this study area. So, there is an existing one in the pipeline. If you look at some of the zoning ones, they still continue processing of the existing. Is the direction to staff... Now, I believe staff has not been working on this, because they had the DRGR study. Is the direction that you wish to postpone any consideration of this application until such time the moratorium is complete?
That would be my second.
So, there's a motion and a second to...
Discussion.
I beg your pardon?
Discussion, please.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. Motion and a second, and discussion. Yes, Steve?
I'm not interested in a moratorium for a year. I think it makes the time set, and they may not have a decision that period of time. I don't want to come back to council and upgrade another moratorium. I also think it takes land rights away from people we've already taken them away from, and I don't think that's right. So, I would, you know, I would not support a moratorium, because I don't think it's appropriate in this case. I think... I used the words, "I think," when we talked to East Benita people the other day. You have a moratorium, because you can't get through the process of building without going in front of this council again, and a moratorium simply adds more bureaucracy on top of bureaucracy. So, I will not support a moratorium. I will support a stakeholder, a professional group to get together to tell us, you know, I want some responsibility out in that audience as well to take hold. They've got ideas. I want to hear what they are. So, I will not support a moratorium.
Mayor?
Any... Well, before...
I'd like to answer my question.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Audrey. I'm sorry.
Can you... Let me ask you. Can you put without a comp plan, you know, hold off, moratorium, whatever you want to call it? Because comp plan amendment... Limiting comp plan amendment applications doesn't take away people's rights. It takes away their process to get more rights. Okay? So, what... They have rights, and we're not infringing on the rights that they have. They have a plan. There's a plan in the DRGR. It's called, like, rural fringe. We're protecting the groundwater. We're giving a place for water. Okay, there is a plan, but it hasn't been implemented. We have a comp plan. That hasn't been implemented. We have a comp plan that says... Okay, so answer my question. But we have a comp plan that says any kind of... Our standards aren't even changed. The rules that...
Martha, what's your question?
I asked her the question.
Actually, I'm kind of...
Can you...
I'm looking for the question also.
The three... The three properties. Can you not put... Not allow comp plan amendment to be processed on those three properties? Call it a moratorium, whatever you want.
So, we're talking about not just the DRGR area. We are actually talking... Or the six section quadrant. You want it property-specific as to three properties?
I'm just asking you the question.
No, and I'm trying to figure out the question, so I could figure out... Normally, when you do a moratorium, it's a more broader land use tool.
Okay, let me tell you what I'm thinking, all right? All right, this is really where you're going to increase density. Okay? The other people who have vested rights, who have small lots, whatever, you know, they're allowed to build on those lots currently, right? We're probably not going to do anything, you know... The DeLisi report said, "Oh, cluster all the small..." Well, who's going to go out and acquire all those lots? Nobody's going to do that. By the way, something that you guys were all praying for for eight years. I had laryngitis over the weekend, but somehow miraculously it changed. Okay, so, the people who have the one acre, the whatever, they're allowed to put a house on it.
If they have a minimum use determination... I'm looking for Jackie real quick.
Okay, well, you know what I'm trying to say.
But they wouldn't be allowed to cluster, because they would have to have everything cookie cutter fashion, because they have the minimum use.
The little guy, okay? The little guy out there who's got a lot. He wants to build it for his family. I'm not talking about the big properties we're talking about. Okay? We have three big properties that may come in, and this is where supposedly the improvement's going to happen. Okay? Can you impose some kind of way to say, "We're not going to process those three comp plan applications for whatever time period it takes that we get a strategic plan put into place for what needs to happen?" This is a limited area. It doesn't have to be so philosophical. It needs pipes over here. It needs treatment here. We need to get the numbers down there. We need to get standards up. Okay? When we do that, then you lift it. Or whatever... What is the mechanism that you can use? And is that legally defensible?
The mechanism you can use is what you have existing in the comprehensive plan, which is you have those limitations under the current comp plan. I mean, what you're saying... What I'm hearing you say, and maybe I'm confused in trying to figure out what you're saying, is that you want to target specific property, so that other property can go through. Now, I can write a moratorium of general application to the DRGR area. I don't think it's necessary, but if it makes you happy, I can write something to that effect. I can have it where it allows the building permits and minimum use determination, so the people, the little people, are not adversely affected, as far as it would be applicable to processing of the existing comprehensive plan amendment that's in there. But here's where I'm getting confused or where I'm having problems. You have essentially a de facto existing moratorium. You have had one for a long period of time. Writing something to be a moratorium on a comp plan area that doesn't allocate rights...
Okay, let me put it this way. If somebody comes in for a comp plan amendment, okay? And we have people who might be coming in for a comp plan amendment.
Absolutely.
Okay? What that does is, once they get the comp plan amendment, the legal hurdle to correct the stuff that's in our comp plan, they could come and say, "Well, if you don't have the standards in place..." They could have the comp plan approved without the proper standards in place in our comp plan, say, "Well, we're allowed to have that." And then when they come for zoning, you can't back it up. And what the citizens are worried about cannot be legally defended. And that's what I want to see happen, that what needs to happen here to get the water right and get it cleaned up, if you want to have development there, I don't believe in it, but if you want to, then get this work done. Get the bones done.
And I don't think I'm disagreeing there, but the question is, is the mechanics of drafting...
The mechanical thing.
Right. And it is. And not mechanical, like fixing stormwater mechanical, but mechanical and legal mechanical. Creating a moratorium for something that you don't need a moratorium.
Okay, you know what? Okay. You know what? We seconded it. I seconded his...
I'm not allowed to say anything either, apparently.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. There is a motion and a second on the table to create a moratorium strictly for comprehensive plan amendments as they relate to DRGR. That the...
Correct.
The DRGR area.
And I would have to advertise as a land use ordinance. It would come back at the next meeting. We'd advertise it.
We understand. We understand all that.
I have one more question before we vote on this. I'm sorry. But did we not just have a case that's similar to this, where we took an existing application and created a moratorium that we got sued over, because we did it after it was submitted? I know we won that case, but why would we put ourselves to the same agony again if there are amendments in place or applications?
I'm trying to figure that one out myself, sir.
Okay.
Call the vote.
Well, it's... That was a development order process. This is a comprehensive plan process.
I understand. Same logic.
That's the same thing. Okay?
Quick one. Audrey, help me out with this. I got number one and a number two on the moratorium, but number three, we start out, discussions of changes in the DRGR can be like drafting regulations and making sausage. Help me with that one. What did you mean by that?
Okay, so obviously I'm on the memo, not my green sheet. And dealing with the DRGR is a very ugly issue. Obviously, people have had difficulty grasping it.
Do tell.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to say. It is a legislative issue. So, this is actually the same issue that I have in the memo. It's the Pacheta case, the one I said is the Yogi Berrism. You know, you don't need a moratorium, because you basically have a moratorium, which is...
Okay, so that's basically the same thing.
Until you actually make a decision...
Okay.
A legislative decision, you don't need to have extra legislation saying you can't. And if you're trying to bind future council, and that could be what you're... You know, I understand the sensitivity that, you know, timing and stuff. You know, binding future council's not necessarily something you can do with a moratorium.
No, yeah, because they could always roll it back, Mayor.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, and along with this moratorium, when you do this language, I want... I need to know, do you... There's a need to be a purpose and intent attached to it.
I'll create one.
You'll create one, huh?
Mayor?
Based on the discussion today.
Yes, I, I think we've given enough discussion of concern that she could craft something that says, we, let's first do this.
Well, I was trying to get down, I mean, I'm sorry this is painful, but I was trying to get down to what actually council's purpose and intent was, instead of Audrey's purpose and intent.
No, I, from...
What is our purpose and intent for creating a moratorium? So that you can put it off for a year, or so that you can, hey, please? This is hard enough as it is. Or so that, so that you can use the time in trying to craft regulations that will allow us to solve some of the problems?
Well, yes, I think that's right, Mayor, and I think we have a consensus. I think we have a consensus that we want to see nutrient reduction, we want to see the water right, we want to figure out how to get this septic deal done. I think that flooding, you know, aquifers, basically what I put in the seven citizens, well-field overlay, that we look at those things, and we come out with a recommendation, and, I don't know what you call it, I mean, look, when we did the homeless shelter, we had a regulating ordinance, right? So, well, we have a strategic plan on water, and you have to get a water manual, I don't know what your legal definition for what that would be, Audrey, but correct our comp plan, for one thing.
Okay, so, let's, just to cut to the chase here a little bit, please have patience with this, this is, this...
Sausage.
Yeah, okay. I love sausage. Anyway, so, I didn't say that, did I?
Yeah, honey, you did.
You did, I said, I'm going home. Honey sausage. Anyway, so, anyway, so, so if that's the purpose and intent, we probably need, we probably need to state that, so that people know why we did what we did, or why we're trying to do what we... Easy. If it, if it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, does it, Audrey?
Right, make us happy.
All right, okay?
Mayor, inherent in that, can we create this task force?
I would hope you would.
I was gonna hold that for, but...
Well, I mean, I, I think that the next step, if you do this, well, then I think that you need to give instructions to staff as to what to do, or what not to do, after you do this, if this happens.
God, what a dance.
Okay, because either that, or, you know, whatever.
Why don't we say we'll do this, and we'll talk about the task force? Call the question.
One, one more comment, Steve, and then we're gonna call a question.
I don't, I don't know how we'll vote on something, we don't even know what the objective is. I mean, Martha, I'm sorry, you've named everything in the, in the wheelbarrow, and I'm not confident that, that you can create a moratorium that meets the standards you want, because we don't know what it means. If you, if you, let me finish, please. If you wait two weeks to create a moratorium, if that's what you want, and allow our city attorney to bring back what she thinks this council has asked for, then you got a better chance of getting it passed. Maybe it'll pass as it is, I don't think I'm comfortable with it, because I don't know what you're asking for.
I think what we, we have all stated is that, and, and I think Audrey could probably simply write it this way, is we want to, we want a year to create a strategic plan to fix and address wellfields, septic tanks, all the water issues that are in the DRGR area, that we are concerned about flooding...
But you want us to vote on the moratorium tonight before she writes it?
No, 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 we're gonna give her direction to write one, that's basically what it is.
Let's clarify that, the direction will be for you to, to prepare a moratorium to, the language of the moratorium, and then you'll come back and ask us to advertise it and go through the whole process.
Right, this is solely direction, and it has to be advertised.
Is that what Councilwoman Simmons asked for originally?
That's what, that's what I, my intent, that is my intent.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, a question, please.
Thank you, and it is one last question, and that is, I'm hearing a moratorium to deal with septic tanks, and yet the moratorium would allow minimum use determinations...
No, 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 the moratorium is strictly, is strictly on comprehensive plan amendments. That's what I've heard, that there's only a moratorium on comprehensive plan amendments in the DRGR area. And even though you say, and I believe as well, that doesn't matter, it's redundant at best, you don't have to approve them anyway, that's what the motion is, is it not?
Well, Mayor?
Right?
That's not the point I was about to raise.
What's the point you would like to raise?
It's counterintuitive, because by creating the moratorium, you're creating a situation where people can only get the single-family residences, which means you can only get the septic tanks, and if the purpose of the moratorium is to reduce the amount of septic tanks, you actually create...
Okay, 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 okay.
You're digging too deep.
Yeah, I like, I like it, it's fun.
You're actually, you're, you're probably right, and, and you're thinking right, stop it. All right?
No, because that will never end with the septic tank thing.
Martha, Martha, please, one at a time.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna, I mean, if council wants to do this, you're gonna have to humor them, okay?
I, I will follow whatever direction council gives me.
Mayor, thank you so much.
I think, you know, whether you call it a moratorium, a resolution, whatever you call it...
I hope this is necessary.
Okay, yeah, I, I've asked to call a question, but, okay, well, okay, no, but the thing is, is it an expression of the council's will, and I think that's what we're looking for, right? I mean, yeah, okay, call the question.
All right.
Please restate the motion.
Would you like to restate the motion?
I'd like to propose a one-year moratorium with the intent of getting the studies correct, the land use and regulation correct, for one year, for time certain, for this council to make a decision a year from now.
And the moratorium is for any comprehensive plan amendments in the DRGR area or study area?
Yeah.
DRGR area.
And that's including processing of existing comprehensive plan amendments, but I'll have that all put into a moratorium.
Thank you so much.
Well done.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Nope.
One, two, three, four, motion carries. Okay, council, next on the list here, what is your plan? Do you wish to form the seven-member task force?
I want to go home. That's what my plan is. There they go. Oh my God, I need a drink of water.
It all takes a moratorium to make everybody go away.
How about that? More of those.
Wish I knew that sooner.
Stops it for a year.
Mayor, come on, I'll be back.
I would like to ask everyone to please, I don't mind that you exit, but please do so quietly, thank you very much.
We have the lights in, Bill.
Are we gonna discuss this?
I, I have no idea, but go ahead and turn them up, I, I think not.
Next is the task force.
Thank you, if you want to have a discussion, could you have it outside, please? Thank you. Okay, council, the next, the next item, it says a seven-member task force, water task force. Is that something that you are desirous of doing?
Yes.
Tonight?
Yes, and I would like it to be, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, speak right into the microphone.
I would like to see it formed out of people who are experts in the field of hydrology, maybe get some of the authors of the studies that, you know, we're depending on here. I'd like to see a member of the conservancy be part of this, and South Florida Water Management, and let's get it, let's get this thing going.
And we'll have a resolution at the next council meeting to set up the entity?
I, I think that that's where we're headed.
Mayor?
Yes?
Since it's my councilmember item, may I talk about it, please?
I don't know.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so, I'm sure that everyone, oh, you're so kind, thank you so much, look at that.
Thank you, sir.
My tax dollars at work.
You need a drink.
Here you go, bud. Okay, all right, I need to get back to, get back to that, I'm so sorry. My laryngitis is coming back. All right, not soon enough, I'm sure. I'm sure all of the people that are on this council, you know, want to have the most qualified people on that council, if, on, on this task force. I suggest it's a seven-member task force that can ask the city manager, we'd like to have Mr. Livingston in for help, to help us. We'd like to have this guy, we'd like to have Brian Farrar come down here and talk to us about Citrus Park, or whatever. We want to have Fred Parton come in and talk to us and tell us about BSU, okay? I have confidence that the citizens in the city, and we've got qualified ones, can accomplish this task. What concerns me, sorry, conservancy, or sorry, you know, whatever, board of realtors, or whatever, I would just like the citizens, because they usually have a horse sense, okay? They, they're like us. They usually have common sense, and they can come to a conclusion after gathering all the information. That's why I'd like to see a citizens' task force. They're the ones that pay the bill, boom, that's it. They live here, they pay the bills, they pay our bills, I think they should be the ones that are helping us.
Yes.
And I'd like, actually, thank you, Martha, for bringing this forward, I feel strongly that it should be citizens, and I actually would go one step further to say, one from each district, and I would also like to go a step further, but to Janet's point, citizens, and let's face it, the citizens are who got us elected, they can be great and well-intentioned, however, they may or may not be experts in the areas of expertise that we're looking. I'd like to have a seven-member citizen task force, and I'd like to, and I guess if you appointed seven experts, then we're at 14, so perhaps a number six, perhaps a number eight, so that there's a total of 15, an odd number is what I'm getting at. And I, I think it should be a hybrid of what Janet said and a hybrid of what you said.
Well, they can call in the experts, they can call in the, you know, the folk that, that have the numbers. How much is it gonna cost to build out, you know, 72, 7300 units? What's the, the price point that you need to break before we break your back with all these extra standards, okay? I mean, that might be something that those folks are gonna need to hear. You know, somebody who, like, like Mr. Livingston, who apparently has had enough, and, you know, other folks that are, that are in the community, they, there are, we do have experts in the community, and I trust that we're just not gonna put on our best friend who, you know, doesn't know about making good decisions, I trust that. I'm just still with the citizens, folks.
Got it. I disagree. I think that if you want, if, if you want a no answer, you should just give a no answer right now and get it over with, because that's, I think that's what a citizens' committee is gonna get you, is a no answer. Don't do anything. I think that the people, the conservancy, I think that the, the people who are involved in this every day, they've worked things out in, in Collier County, they've done excellent work all over the state of Florida. I think you need to depend on those people to come up with these creative ideas, creative, restrictive ideas. I have high reconfidence that they can do that by working with the professionals in the community, and then, everybody can come back in with t-shirts again, and, and critique the conservancy's work, and the Audubon, Audubon Society's work, and everything else. I think that that's the best way. If you, if you really are serious about creating positive change in that area, these are the people to do it. These are the people to do it. A, a, a group of citizens, I don't know, we, we all carry our predispositions and our, and our prejudices, and our, and our preconceived notions with us, we all do, I mean, and it's okay, they're, they're citizens, they're entitled to do that. But that's not the pathway to where you're looking to get. If you're looking to get to a no, just say no.
Well, I think we had that with the library task force, and we've honored what they've had to say, they were able to filter through all the technical information, right? We've done this with our technology board. They look through all the technical information, and we trust citizens to do that. We trust citizens with lots of things, and apparently they trusted us, and we're just citizens too.
Well, I'll, I'll look for the guidance from, from council here, I mean, I'm, I'm predisposed to have seven, a seven-member board of, of experts, and, and a citizen advocate on there, represent them on the city. If, if you want to do something different, make a proposal, make a proposal. Audrey, yes?
And council, I, I recognize, and we'll create whatever committee you want to create, but recognize that we do have this committee, if it's something that city council creates, does have to follow the sunshine law. And if you start having a bunch of professionals, as well as citizens, but professionals, you need to make sure that, you know, that, that there's only like one seat for the professionals, because, and maybe one alternate, but otherwise, otherwise what you're looking at is something where they're not able to communicate outside of a scheduled meeting.
And they might have working relationships.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it's doable, but I would not suggest the mega-committee, you know, having so many people that everybody's a committee member, because then you will have sunshine issues.
Council, what's your pleasure?
What if it's created as an advisory board? Does that take it out of sunshine?
No, advisory boards, as long as it's created by you, it is under the Florida sunshine law. I'm sure Barbara Peterson's happy to hear me say that, but, you know, but, you know, again, these people can work, they can do their own ad hoc, you know, and not under the guise of council, and if that is fair, then that could also work.
Well, and that's why the people you put on there, you have, there has to be distance, they have to have separation to where you, you don't have, assign one person there who, who works with this other really closely, and if they do, they just can't talk about this one particular subject. That's all it is to it.
Mayor, I mean, I'm sure you know citizens, or you would want to have a, the conservancy, conservancy people, you could appoint one of them. You know, you want to have somebody to, to give a different viewpoint, then you appoint them.
I'm, I'm looking for a proposal from somebody, I, I've made my proposal, that's what I was thinking.
Yes, sir, I made a proposal here, professionals are citizens too, and you can appoint your professional people to be on there.
And I'd go back to the hybrid of the two, and I, I don't think that's really getting, that makes a bigger committee, I get, yes, I get that.
Well, it doesn't have to, you could say, you want three citizens and four professionals.
Okay, well, you could say you want a geol-, a hydrogeologist, let's remember, these people...
Or we could form a committee to form the committee.
Oh my God, let's not be all night.
Torium on committees.
Or Torium on committees, I second that.
Steve, you're so funny. But, you know, we've caught, we have said, this, this kind of committee will have the structure of these kind of individuals, okay? But remember, you're gonna be paying for those kind of individuals instead of, to be on the committee all the time, possibly. Let's say we want a hydrogeologist on the committee, you want to pay for having a hydrogeo- because you might not be able to find one who commit that time, but you would be able to have a hydrogeologist come in, maybe at the city's expense, we'll say we want to hear from one, and we'll come in and discuss and explain what's the problem in the area.
Okay, we, we need to cut to the chase, I would make a, I'm gonna make a motion that we form a seven-member committee with three, with three citizens appointed, and four professionals from, from varying, one of them being from the conservancy, and, and, and other environmental interests in water, water interest.
I love that, that's so good.
Well, good, then second it.
Well, it's just not very specific, I mean...